This March 17th, 2022, meeting of the Lake Oswego City Council is now called to order. Ms. Linder, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Buck?
Here.
Counselor Verdic?
Here.
Mayor or Counselor Rafferty, excuse. Counselors Mians?
Here.
Boo?
Here.
Wendlin?
Here.
And Min.
Here.
Thank you very much, and now, everyone, please stand, remove your hats, and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Well, for 33 years, the city of Lake Oswego has earned Tree City USA recognition from the National Arbor Day Foundation for demonstrating a strong commitment to managing and caring for trees. Arbor Day is America's national tree holiday, observed the last Friday of April, to celebrate the role of trees in our lives and to promote tree planting and care. This year marks the 150th anniversary of National Arbor Day, and for the second year in a row, Governor Brown has proclaimed the entire month of April as Oregon Arbor Month, and so will Lake Oswego. So I will be signing the Arbor Month proclamation, and it will be posted to our website. All right, so next, we're going to move into public comment. If anyone would like to provide public comment, there are white sheets in the back to sign up, but we have Dorothy Atwood and Linda Ganzini. I understand you both are together. Welcome.
Hi.
I'm Linda.
Hi.
Great. So, good afternoon, councilor members and mayor. So I'm Linda Ganzini, and I'm a board member of the Lake Oswego Sustainability Network, and I'm here speaking on behalf of the entire board. I appreciate the city staff has solicited our thoughts about a variety of city plans over the last few months. We're very grateful for that, and I'm pleased that about the council's 2022 goals include climate change. This respects reflects the importance of sustainability and climate change as reflected in the recent city survey. This afternoon, the council will hear three ideas for improving the sustainability of the LoRAC, the new city pool. Two of these ideas are very straightforward, and they may be money-saving, conditioning the pool and the use of electric heat pumps in the dry side of the pool. And I attended the Parks Board meeting last night, and the Parks Board supported both of these changes. The third idea is about expanding the use of solar panels from half of the roof to all of the roof. Now, this could give pause because the cost of this is half a million dollars. The Parks Board hesitated to endorse the idea of panels on all of the roof, and I want to make the case for not discarding this idea yet. Solar panels on the roof would supply 7% of the energy for all of LoRAC, not a small amount when considering how much energy a pool uses. There's not been a calculation of how long the payback would be, period, for the solar panels would be. If solar energy produced, if electricity produced is not used, it can be sold back to PGE. And the electricity produced from the solar panels may eventually save money for LoRAC and for the city. So more information is needed before the council addresses this. But the second part of my argument is that solar energy addresses the climate crisis. Our recent city survey supports that the climate crisis is at the top of mind for Lake Oswego residents, and they want the city to address it. Members of the Parks Board considered that there may be arguments for waiting to add incentives or that the cost of solar panels may come down. But climate change is urgent, and the time to act is now. The city councillor in attendance at the Parks Board, Council Member Wendlin, a very responsible guy, pointed out that a half a million dollars is a lot of money, and it's got to come from somewhere. If it's used for solar panels, there's not going to be money for someplace else. Though, the first argument suggests that it won't be just a half a million dollar, that some of it may come back. But remember, using solar panels puts money towards something that residents value, and they value highly, and they may be willing to recommend that in place of something else they value less. So in summary, get more information on the payback period for extending solar panels to the entire roof before a decision is made. And then factor other facts into your decision. The climate crisis is an emergency. Residents of Lake Oswego agree it's an emergency, and they want you to address it. Thank you.
And I'm Dorothy Atwood. Good afternoon, mayor and city councillors. Thank you for your service to our community. I really do appreciate that. I also serve on the board of the Lake Oswego Sustainability Network, and I'd just like to add a few items to what Linda has said about the LoRAC discussion, but also provide some input to the other study session item, the demolition and deconstruction item. So regarding LoRAC, I'd really like to thank the Park staffs for soliciting hours and SAB's input on the project in November. Although late in the process, as Linda testified, they thoroughly, thoughtfully considered our suggestions and have incorporated some of them. With respect to adding more solar to the roof, I fully support what Linda is talking about, and there are some very unique financing options for solar. One is community supporting solar in one way or another, and there are other grants available. I, for one, live luckily, as Mayor Buck talked about, Tree City, Lake Oswego, in a very treeed area, but that precludes putting solar on my roof. I would individually be happy, and I'd enjoy participating and contributing to solar on other roofs in our community, and I'm sure I'm not the only community member. So secondly, I want to talk to the demolition and deconstruction issue. We'd like to go on record to support what the Lake Oswego Sustainability Advisory Board's February 28th memo to you and the Planning Commission brought forth. We support code revisions that will tighten the definition of remodel, thus requiring major teardowns in Lake Oswego to follow requirements for demolition. We also encourage the council to look at deconstruction options, such as what the city of Portland has put in place to require deconstruction for homes older than 1940. There are many valuable housing materials that could be reused and repurposed to achieve the highest use of this material and reduce the amount going to landfill. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, both of you. Thank you for agreeing to pay for the solar. We appreciate that.
Make the check out Lake Oswego City for $500,000, and you've got your solar panels. Thank you, Dorothy.
Thank you, John. That's a great idea. I was just thinking it might be like an awesome collective community opportunity, not just individual.
Very good.
But I appreciate your suggestions.
Thank you both so much. Thank you. Okay. Any other public? Okay.
No, ma'am.
All right, then, we are going to move to item 6.1, our first public hearing. This is ordinance 2884, in ordinance of the city council amending the Community Development Code for the purpose of clarifying and updating various provisions and adopting findings. We will start with a hearing procedure by our deputy city attorney, Evan Boo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a legislative decision, which is generally a policy decision within the discretion of the city council. Although legislative decision may be discretionary, it must also comply with any applicable state law, as well as any applicable statewide planning goal or administrative rule adopted pursuant to ORS Chapter 197. A legislative amendment to the zoning code, development code, and development standards must also comply with the applicable provisions of the Lake Oswego Comprehensive Plan. The public hearing process will begin with a presentation by staff, and testimony will be received from the public, individuals, five minutes. Recognized neighborhood associations, homeowners associations, government agencies, or other incorporated public interest organizations will add up to 10 minutes. At those time limits, should not include time spent taking by questions from the council or responses to the questions. Any person in attendance may cede his or her time to another person, but in no case shall a person's time be increased to greater than 10 minutes. Do any of the councillors need to declare a financial conflict of interest? Seeing none, senior planner Evan Friendsted with the staff report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boo, and members of the council. Waiting for that to come. Okay, so we're here to discuss the annual code amendments for 2021, even though we're a little late, it's 2022, as we all know. So the purpose of the annual code amendments is to correct errors, eliminate test redundancy, clarify text, and comply with state statutes in a couple of the cases here. It's also to implement minor policy changes intended to streamline permit processing and implement council goals and priorities. We have 10 items to discuss today, five are maintenance items and five are policy items. I'll go through each one individually. If you have questions, don't hesitate to ask. I can, you know, deal each item as we go. All items comply with city's comprehensive plan and goals and policies. So beginning with the first one, these are the maintenance items first. The first one is the building design standards for commercial, industrial, and multifamily development. So it's all new buildings are required to be complementary to structures on adjacent properties. Our current practice has been, and this would codify that, the standard only applies to adjacent buildings that are of similar design and characteristics. So we're talking about commercial to commercial or commercial buildings to multifamily buildings, not trying to compare commercial to single-family dwellings. So it's just making it clear what is already the practice today. Item number two is to delete an obsolete reference that for the 180-day extension in the code that is not consistent with Oregon revised statutes. There's no extension allowed for the statute, so it just needs to be removed from the code. Oh, there we go. Item number three. So the current code requires a setback from, so a new access lane for a flat lot has to be at least five feet from existing dwelling. Our current interpretation is that that five feet is measured from the access easement, but the code isn't very clear right now, and this would just make it very clear that it's from the access easement, which is 20 feet. The fourth item fixes an inconsistency within the minor variance standards that it's a little confusing right now, where it says that a variance to a yard setback can be reduced to 20%, but then it also later on says that 50% if you preserve a tree. So it's which is it? Is it 20% or 50%? It's a little unclear. This will make it clear that the standard is 20%, but if you are preserving a tree, if it's for to preserve a tree, then you can increase it to 50%. Item number five is to comply with House Bill 2583, which basically says you can't limit the number of people in a household. So it removes that reference and just makes it a simple definition without any number of people referenced. Any question on any of those items so far? Nope? Okay. So now into the policy items. So the first one is expanding the hours of Saturday market type uses on Sunday. So the current code requires that any Saturday market type uses, whether it's by the Parks Department or some other type use like that, that hours on the weekends are from 8:00 to 4:00 on Saturdays and 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. on Sundays. This will expand it from to start at 11:00 a.m. instead of 1:00 p.m. And this is, this came as a request by the city Parks Department when they received comments from vendors and neighbors that indicated a desire to explore earlier start time in order to increase attendance at the Lake Grove Farmers Market. So this would allow them to start a little earlier and hopefully increase in attendance. But this would apply for any Saturday market type uses, not just to that one farmers market. Any questions about this? Okay, move along here. That thing's touchy. There we go. All right, so the, when we brought this to the planning commission, this item included two different items. One was to decrease the maximum size of boat houses from 560 feet to 500. Planning commission decided not to recommend approval of that item. They received public comments from two members of the public in opposition to this, and their opposition was that the maximum size of boat houses didn't need to be reduced because there was insufficient area. The 560 feet is necessary to provide for the boat and for access around the boat, whatever else boat accessories you might need. Now, kitchen found that the 60-foot square foot difference between the maximum size of 500 and 560 is inconsequential in terms of visibility and sightlines along Oswego Lake, and the current standards allow for sufficient storage of space and do not create significant larger building mass along the lake. So they recommended not to approve this item. The second part is really just to clarify what's already in the code, that boat houses do not have to comply with side or rear setbacks if they're located within the 25-foot lake setback. This is already stated, not as transparently as we like, earlier in the code. This would put it in the table and make it crystal clear that side and rear setbacks don't apply to boat houses.
Why did this issue come up in the first place?
Which one?
The size.
The size. It was brought forth because the Lake Corporation already has a maximum size of 500 square feet. Most of the properties along the lake, the boat houses are located completely within Lake Core property. So it's a small number of boat houses that are either partially within the lake and non-city property or completely within the city of Lake Oswego. We're trying to make it easy on everybody to have one standard that, you know, 500 square feet for both Lake Core and the city. That's really where it started from.
I see. So most of the boat houses are already 500 square feet?
That's what would apply. The Lake Core does allow for an exception. I'm not sure exactly how they apply that, but they can ask for larger if they need it.
I see. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so the third item is back to the building design standards for commercial, multifamily, industrial. This is second part of it. This adds a clarifying sentence that a new building on a site that has multiple buildings already isn't required to be complementary to buildings of adjacent design, as I talked about earlier, but has to integrate with the buildings on-site instead. Right now, it's not really very clear if a new building would be on a multi-building site, if it has to be complementary to all the adjacent buildings of good design and to the sites on the existing buildings on-site, which can be conflicting. If the existing buildings on-site, you know, they're non-conforming to the current standards, and that can be really tough. We have to basically say, well, we're not complementary maybe to some buildings, but we are, we integrate with the remaining buildings on-site. This makes it clear that it's, you don't need to do both. It doesn't need to be complementary to the adjacent buildings on good design on other properties, just to integrate with the site itself.
Could you give us an example of how that would apply and just talk us through something?
Sure. So the most recent case was the Merrill Hurst Affordable Housing Project, 100 Unitable Housing. So that, you know, Merrill Hurst Campus has mini buildings, but it's also adjacent to Mary's Woods. So they, in that project, they had to comply with both because the standard hasn't been, code hasn't been changed yet. So they had to analyze how it integrated with all the buildings, well, with the design of the Merrill Hurst Campus, the existing buildings, but they also had to discuss how it was complementary to the buildings on Mary's Woods as well.
Well, wouldn't one Mary's Woods, when it was built, had to be complementary to the Merrill Hurst Campus anyway, right? If this was already on the books?
What, sorry? Say that again?
Wouldn't, if you, Mary's Woods that was developed would have to be complementary to the Merrill Hurst Campus if this was in place?
If this code amendment was in place?
No.
Or just as the code is written today?
As the code is written.
Yeah, well, you're complementary to adjacent buildings that are similar in nature, so it depends on what the building is, but yes.
Mr. Mayor, if I, and I don't think Mary's Woods, and Merrill Hurst is the best example because that's subject to an overall development plan schedule that was back in the 80s, and part of the plan required design compatibility. But there are certain instances, I mean, you have existing, you have existing neighborhoods for commercial areas, commercial buildings, and if you have a multi-site commercial site, you have to be, the question is, you have to be complementary to the buildings that are within the, within the development, that is, within the commercial site, okay? Because that's a multi-building site. But if those pre, if those have pre-existed the building standard, those buildings may not be complementary to the buildings outside the site.
Right.
And so then the question, as Planner Friendsted indicated, does the new building coming into that multi-building site have to be complementary to both the buildings on the site, but the, but the buildings, and how does it be complementary to the buildings that are off-site as well, if those are conflicting? So I think the concept is you want to be complementary to the buildings that are on the site, because that's the theme of the site, and then the neighborhood sort of already adjusted to that, and let's say the commercial area around it has adjusted to it.
So what if you have a historical building or something that they want to replace because it, maybe it got burned down, okay? And they want to put it back up again? So it, and let's just say it's a hall or something that had early design that maybe doesn't fit in around the area now. Would they be able to rebuild that under, could they replicate what they had?
First of all, it's a non-residential building?
Well, you say commercial or residential. So this is just residential?
Okay, the standard does not apply to the single-family residential?
Right.
Okay. So it's, if it's not a single-family residential building?
Right.
Historical, that burns down, they, the new building, let's see, if it's, and this gets into the non-conforming section as well. If it's, and this gets into the non-conforming section as well. The, a non-conforming section, non-conforming building, it's not residential with, it's more at fifty percent, would have to comply with the new standards. So, it would be, so the new building would have to be complementary to the buildings that are within the site, okay? Under the standard. And as far as being complementary buildings off-site, this code would say, no, you don't look that far. You just look to the, to the multi-building site.
Okay.
So, if the site is in fact one building, and that building burns down?
Then it must be complementary to the buildings off-site.
Off-site?
Yes. This, this is really addressing the problem with the multi-building site is the which one, which one you have to be complementary to?
Right. Clarifying language. Got it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Number four. We heard during pandemic that applicants are required to hold a neighborhood meeting as part of a development application, and during pandemic, they were online. And we heard from both applicant and neighborhood associations that this was beneficial. So, this allows the applicant to hold online neighborhood meetings if the chair of the recognized neighborhood association agrees. Questions?
If there is no neighborhood association?
Well, I mean, required to work with the closest abiding neighborhood association. Okay. Yeah.
Well, if they don't like each other.
And the last one is online public hearings. So, this, this code amendment would allow, well, it's, the first part is in requirement from H. B. twenty-five sixty, which requires a governing body, which includes, for chapter fifty is the planning commission, DRC, to hold meetings that are accessible remotely through technological means, either telephone, video, or other electronic virtual means, and provide opportunity for members of the general public to remotely submit oral and written testimony. So, this would allow them to do that by having, we could have hybrid meetings. Right now, the code says it means have to be in person. And it also would require written submitted of evidence and requesting public meeting login information by noon the day of the hearing and prohibiting submission of in-person written materials. The reason for this is it's difficult for staff to intake materials at the hearing whilst conducting a hybrid meeting and for commissions to review written materials while also listening to testimony like you are right now. Anyone can request a mandatory continuance of initial evidentiary hearing to submit additional written materials if they want. So, if someone says, if they come with information and say, we want to give this a commission, and we say, sorry, you had to submit that by noon that day, they can say, well, I'm requesting a continuance, and, and we'll grant that. Any questions on that?
Just to clarify, so prohibits the in-person written materials?
That's right.
Well, I see. We do receive that quite often, though.
So, this would apply just to the planning commission in, well, chapter fifty, right? So?
Oh.
Right. So, planning commission, DRC.
Oh, not to the city council?
Right.
The council is on the record.
Right.
So, you don't have any new written, new evidentiary written material? You may have a written argument, but it's on the record.
So, you're just referring to hearings? If folks come with just public comment and they want to pass out materials, they could pass out the materials, right?
To, to the DRC and planning commission?
Yeah. They don't have a kind of open comment period like we do?
They do. There's, yes, they can submit public comments.
Right.
Okay.
But they, sorry. Do you want to go?
You asked to, to open comment period, it would not apply. This only applies to public hearing on a specific quasi-judicial application.
Okay. Got it. Okay. Thank you. Makes sense. Okay. Any questions? Okay.
And that concludes my presentation. Planning commission recommendation was the adoption of ordinance two-eight-eight-four as proposed, of course, without the limitations of boat house size. And staff recommends that city council tenderly approve L. U. twenty-one dash zero-zero-five-seven as recommended by the planning commission and work staff return on April fifth with a written version of the ordinance, including findings and conclusions.
Okay. Thank you. Don't go too far. Okay. Well, now we're going to open the public hearing. Ms. Slender? If there, if anyone would like to testify that has not yet signed up, the blue sheets in the back and just, Ms. Slender. Mr. Franstad, maybe we'll have you, and then we'll bring you back up if there's questions after the public hearing. So, we have Carol Ockert. Hi, Ms. Ockert.
Hi.
Please go ahead and start whenever you're ready.
Okay. Good afternoon. I'm Carol Ockert, and today I'm representing both the Neighborhood Chairs Committee and the Fan Forest Hills Neighborhood Association Board. We get that it is better use of council time to have one concise presentation rather than to fill your afternoon with people testifying one after the other to support the same position. So, we hope that that's appreciated. And I'm speaking on two items. The first is item one in the staff report that asks council to interpret code fifty-point-six-point-one-five-BI commercial, industrial, and multifamily development not located in the F. M. U. zone and minor development in the R. D. D. zone, it's historic all time, with regard to design, to mean that a development that is three or more attached units, multifamily, public or commercial, does not have to be complementary in design to the surrounding single-family homes in the neighborhood. We believe that these building types, when set inside a neighborhood, have been and should continue to be complementary in design to the surrounding neighborhood. Last year, residents participated in a city survey that was compiled into an amazing neighborhood character report. Every one of our Lake Oswego neighborhoods was described with introductory character statements and included descriptions of dominant residential building forms. Pride in our unique neighborhood across the city came through loud and clear. With your investment in that survey, we can see that this council cares about neighborhood character. There are valued city buildings that were clearly designed to fit into the first edition neighborhood and be complementary in design to homes there. An example is the Adult Community Center with its welcoming northwest craftsman design in first edition. The Lake Oswego Library is another friendly public facility designed to fit right into the neighborhood. Just finished in twenty-twenty-one is a new pump house that replaced the old water tower at Tenth and Sea. This was Joel Kamerek's last project before his retirement. He worked with the neighborhood to achieve a design that would serve both the necessary function and be complementary to the surrounding residences. The new pump house has appreciative neighbors who either back up to it or look directly at it, and many frequent walkers have commented on the lovely neighborhood fit. Staff notes that the Woodmont Park bathroom was not designed to complement the surrounding single-family homes, but after concern expressed to council by Forest Highlands residents, that bathroom was never built. The Lake Corp. building is given as an example of a design that staff did not require to complement surrounding home designs. But in a letter in the file from the Lake Corp., it states that neighbors on Lakefront Road and Jan Castle, the neighborhood chair at the time, were consulted. There has not been a DRC hearing for a formal interpretation of this code. Council now has that option before you today. Complementary to single families should continue to be included in code interpretation. There is clearly ample latitude already worked into our code to manage the needs and promote desired outcomes for projects across the city. When a new multifamily project is cited in a neighborhood, we want it to be designed to become a part of the neighborhood. You are the final precedent-setting body. You have all seen the neighborhood entrance signs proudly displayed across the city saying that you are entering one of our established neighborhoods. Please do not remove an element from Lake Oswego's code that promotes the continuation of this unique neighborhood character across Lake Oswego. Next, I want to bring your attention to item number five. Staff is proposing a new definition for the term family because we are directed by the state to remove restrictions based on familial wording. The proposed staff code does remove the problematic code language, but it also removes an upper bound we have had in our code for many years that placed a limit of five on the number of unrelated people occupying a dwelling unit. My neighbor across the street rented out her home for several years to four great young guys who all worked for a bar in downtown Lake Oswego. Excellent neighbors, no issues. But if the number had not been constrained, if there were ten people independently renting rooms in the house, I don't believe it would have worked. They had four cars, but ten cars to park would have been problematic for the neighbors, one of whom is Forest Hills Elementary School. The extra cars that could not have been parked on-site would have taken up on-street parking typically used by elementary parents and after-school ballfield parents. Several years ago, other states across the country started updating their code to remove the terminology relating to familial and also replaced it with single housekeeping unit. What followed were problems associated with lack of clarity about just what a single housekeeping unit was and how a property could be used. It varied from city to city, but the one constancy was that having no definition left it too open-ended, and problems followed. Fortunately, we don't have to reinvent a solution. Cities crafted code to fit their communities without using the familial terminology. As I researched, I find several variations for the definition of single housekeeping unit, speaking to shared lease agreements, consent of owner or ownership, space for the number of occupants relating to number of square feet of gross floor area, and other possibilities that I've noted in the handout. As a community, we have to care about and safeguard the standard of living for all people in the community. Adopting code after the problems occur is not optimal and not necessary. Our new code can drive good outcome, and you can adopt code that will ensure a baseline standard of livability in our dwellings. Pause adopting this item tonight. Have staff provide you with an appropriate definition for single housekeeping unit. To recap, the Fan Forest Hills Neighborhood Association and the Neighborhood Chairs Committee are respectfully requesting that with regard to item one, please direct the standard to design buildings continue to be complementary in appearance to include adjacent single-family buildings. Getting set to reopen is our beloved Albert Community Center, an amazing interior remodel while continuing to maintain the ever-familiar exterior that fits so perfectly into the neighborhood. As the neighborhood welcome signs across our city indicate, we value the character of Lake Oswego's neighborhoods. And to item five, before adopting the new code that removes our current upper bound of five unrelated people, ask staff to bring you back language that defines single housekeeping unit so that we maintain a baseline standard for livability in our community that respects all people and cares about everyone's living standards. It can be done in practical terms that will drive good outcome. Thanks for your interest today. I know that you're attending to many items. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to testify? Okay. And we will close the public hearing, and then, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Franstad? Yes. Okay. Mr. Franstad, will you please? I think Counsel Verdic has a question.
Yeah. I was just wondering what your response was to some of our public comment, especially in terms of the complement with, excluding residential in terms of being complementary to that, because I think there were some good points. Is there other areas of the code that address this, or could you just give your feedback?
Sure. Carrie, can you pull up the attachment two that I sent?
Oh, it's on the block.
It's up here? Okay. How do I do that? Can I close this out? Okay. So, I'm just bringing up the actual code language that we're changing, so you can see the whole standard. Okay. So, I guess just to read it. So, buildings shall be designed and located to be complementary and preserve existing buildings, streets and paths, bridges and other elements of built environment, and to assure accessibility for bicycles, pedestrians, and users in transportation modes. Buildings to be complementary in appearance to adjacent buildings of good design and with regards to materials, setbacks, roof lines, height, and overall proportions. So, it's not just about the building design itself. You have to look at the materials, you have to look at proportions. So, if you have a four-story building, multifamily building that adjacent, single-family dwellings are adjacent to, of course, then that's not going to be in proportion with that, with the two-story, single-family dwelling. So, it's not just the overall design proportions. They would not be able to meet that. So, that's an issue.
Is that clarified?
So, it appears that we've already, our code is already addressing that. So, let's say the Adult Community Center, something happens to it. Let's hope nothing happens to it. It's a beautiful structure.
Just remodeled it.
It just remodeled it. But if something happens, we can't suddenly put something that's out of character for the surrounding neighborhood because we've already clarified that in the code.
Right. Wouldn't?
It wouldn't meet necessarily roof lines, height, and so forth if you suddenly came in and put in like a multi-story structure in that space.
Well, so this, this code amendment would, you would not look at single-family dwellings. So, whatever, we have to look at the surrounding properties, and you're also limited by maximum height of a zone. I'm not sure what zone, I don't remember what zone that is. So, there's other standards.
So, it's still following the, some of the zone, the, again, the height, some of the other requirements within the zone?
That's right.
Are still being implemented. So, it can't suddenly create something that would be out of character for what another single-family house would be, for example? Because it's in that zone. So?
Right. I'm trying to think of an example here, but the, for the adult center, the community center, like, there are some single-family zones around there. And there's more building design standards than, than just this one that they have to meet. So, I don't have all of them up here.
I think that the concern of Ms. Ockert was, you know, fair just to say, you know, we have some really good examples that we don't want to suddenly see something completely out of character for those spaces. And so, just making sure that the code isn't suddenly saying, allowing for the possibility of creating something that's very out of character. So, because now it doesn't have to be complementary to those residential. So, I don't want us to kind of suddenly step back and have something built that's really drastically out of character and then say, oh, this was a bad kind of loophole in the code. So, I just want to make sure that we've covered our bases.
Let me ask you, could they build the louvre? I mean, the glass thing? Under, if we take this, I mean, that was old, and they brought in new. I mean, that was by design, and it was, I'm sure lots of people had issues with it. But the question is, could they do that? Let's just say we had more money for the Adult Community Center, and we wanted to make a big, huge glass pyramid for some reason.
We would, with these proposed amendments, we'd have to look at adjacent buildings of good design that are similar in characteristics. We have to look at multifamily buildings or if there's any other commercial buildings around it. I, I don't think that the louvre would probably be complementary to those buildings.
Okay.
But if there, if there are no other commercial buildings around it, what do you compare it to? So, if what's around it is residential buildings?
So, they're just completely surrounded by single-family residential? Is that the scenario we're talking about?
Yeah. The Adult Community Center, I believe it's all surrounded by residential. The library is all residential.
Well, then this standard would not apply to this section I. The rest of the building design standards would.
Right.
So, we have to go through those.
This is just a clarification, right? That's, this is, this is not a policy. This is in our clarification section, right, of the codes amendments we're adopting. There's no policy change here.
Well, this is a policy item.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is... This is the way that staff has been interpreting this section. This is a policy item.
Which is listed as the code maintenance item.
Oh, it's maintenance, sorry. It is a maintenance item that, well, we've been interpreting this for a while this way, but yes.
Can I ask another example? Please, please. Our new Lorac building is going to look somewhat like Lake Ridge, but in the situation that it's in now, is it supposed to be, it doesn't look anything like most of the houses in the Palisades neighborhood. So how do we, I mean, how does that work? Is it because, I mean, Lake Ridge was built and that did not exactly fit within the architecture of the Palisades neighborhood? So how did that, I mean, get built? I mean, if it was under the current codes, could they build that structure? When was that built? 1971, '72?
Seventy-three.
Seventy-three?
And then remodeled.
But it was always a modern building within the...
Right, it was. It was round and it was modern and...
Because, you know, I'm just trying to follow the logic. Now we're going to put Lorac, which is going to look like sort of similar in Lake Ridge sort of territory. So we're covered because it's similar to what we already have. Is that correct? I mean, it's, you know, but it still doesn't look like the Palisades neighborhood architecture.
Right, with this code amendment, it wouldn't be required to be complementary to the single-family dwellings.
Right.
Only to the site, correct?
Well, that's how it has multiple buildings, right? So it's, would be required to integrate with the remaining buildings on site.
The clubhouse or whatever else would be...
Whatever, other buildings on site, whatever, yeah.
Right, so this would give a looser code, but...
I think Mr. Boone has that.
Yeah.
That example of Lorac, to the Palisades Neighborhood Association or the Palisades neighborhood, doesn't apply because of the word adjacent is defined as that which is abutting or across the street. So it's not the whole neighborhood. It's adjacent properties.
Well, the edge of the golf course is adjacent property.
Okay, then you'd look to that, well...
And those houses are representative of Palisades.
You'd look at that house then.
Right. There's kind of a row of houses there that are built in the mid-'70s. And it doesn't look anything, I mean, I would not say that that's probably in the same character. I'm just trying to figure out how... I'm okay with this, but I just want to make sure that we're not allowing a louvre without consideration for what's already there. Because I do believe that we have neighborhoods that are very unique and they have their own character and so on. And I just want to make sure that we're able to continue with that while still giving commercial development projects, you know, some room to grow. I mean, it's, so I don't... This is just my comment. Counselor.
May I? Thank you. Every neighborhood is unique. We know this. As Ms. Ockert pointed out, there is uniqueness to every neighborhood. First Edition, I believe, and I could be wrong, is special in that we airdropped in the day these very specific community buildings into single-family neighborhoods. Other neighborhoods that have a design standard, such as the Boones Ferry area, elected to follow a much more eclectic design standard in their commercial, therefore creating a situation where if you had an Art Deco building, say for example, and the adjacent property was not Art Deco, I know what you're going to say, it's not single-family, but you wouldn't have to build another Art Deco building, correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
It's complementary, it doesn't mean matchy or completely...
Exactly. I take also, for example, neighborhoods that are extremely eclectic, such as Hall and Anne Heights or South Shore McVeigh, where you, South Shore McVeigh, you have commercial buildings that fit a particular era, probably, oh, when was the Grims built Palisades Market? Or, you know, when Grims was removed in the '90s, I think it was, or 2000, somewhere around there. Abutting to houses that were built in the '40s and '50s. But again, single-family. The adjacent properties are more or less the same. The site properties are more or less the same. I don't see the problem. Are we overthinking this, Mr. Francis, a little bit?
Yes.
Well, I think it's rare that, to find a commercial or multifamily property where a new building will be placed with surrounded by a single-family. In most cases I can think of that I've dealt with, there's been other commercial buildings or multifamily buildings to look at. So...
Right.
It seems like an unusual situation in that case.
And even within neighborhoods?
Okay. I would have to say that I think that the policy, the new policy language that's written is fairly clear. I mean, if there is an issue, the issue is First Edition and the fact that we have three public structures in First Edition. I don't, I don't know. Has this been a big problem in the past?
Not that I'm aware of. It's more of an issue for staff to try to interpret, to analyze two conflicting code sections, basically what it is. And how do you complementary on one hand and also be integrated with a site, building on sites?
Okay.
And trying to say that a new commercial building is complementary to a single-family in terms of scale and height and roof lines and things like that is very difficult to find.
Well, and we generally are not going to airdrop a commercial building into a single-family neighborhood for, in most cases. I'm not saying you couldn't have.
Right, those buildings would, yeah, new buildings would not be allowed in those...
Would not happen.
Yeah, I think the community center is owned residential.
Exactly, and I understand the time in which that was built. Okay, thank you, Mr. Francis, I appreciate the further explanation. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor.
Yeah, I'm not airdropping here, but I... Mr. Boone, is it possible to call Ms. Ockert to respond to questions?
Yes, certainly.
Yeah.
I think it's up to council discretion.
Yeah, I, yeah. I just wanted to do some clarification because I... Ms. Ockert, thank you for really your comment. It's, what I don't understand on B, like the design standards, where do you find problems? Like where you have some fears that the code would interfere with the way your neighborhood is designed?
So when we're looking here, we're looking at multifamily as well as commercial and industrial. Currently, multifamily means three or more units. And so putting three or more units in a neighborhood is very normal. We're looking to changing that code so that multifamily will mean five or more, but currently it means three or more. So that's very typical. Senate Bill 458, I believe it is, or no, maybe it's Senate Bill 8, House Bill 8. There's a change where it's going to, it is now possible to use sites that are public facility sites and churches for multifamily housing with a much more constrained public process. So we'll have less ability to comment on that. And so I think, again, when we're looking at multifamily and the ability to put them inside of our neighborhoods, I think that's a good thing. And I want it to really fit well with those neighborhoods. I want as much design care to be given to those structures as I do for the folks that are living in single-family homes. I think that they're both valuable. And that's why I think it's really important that we want to see really good quality multifamily. And I think this is the way to continue to get that, to not weaken our code and not say it doesn't have to fit in with the surrounding neighborhoods. So I think keeping that multifamily piece is something that we're all going to be dealing with more and more. And we want to be able to deal with it more and more.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Does anyone have any additional questions for Mr. Francis? Okay, would someone like to make a motion?
What is it? A motion to? Is that six, I'm sorry?
Yes.
Move to tentatively approve Ordinance 2884 and direct staff to return on April 5, 2022 with a final version of the ordinance including findings and conclusion for LU 210057.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Counselor. To the point of the familial term. So we go from family to what? I mean, is it?
To...
Non-family?
Persons, right, not family, not the, it's just persons living together as a single housekeeping unit. Definitely, single housekeeping unit is currently required? Well, maybe I should back up just a moment on what the definition of family is in our current code to show why it doesn't really work either, okay? What it requires is no more than five persons and their relatives. And so if you have five individual people, you then have spouses and children coming off of that. So you can have five plus all of the offshoot. As long as those 25 people are living together in a house as a single housekeeping unit, then that fits the definition of a single family, of a family for purposes of single-family dwelling. Now, the state statute that was referred to, that has been adopted, abolishes occupancy limits based upon either familial or nonfamilial basis. So we can't, I mean, one option would be to say, all right, let's say no more than 20 people in a house. But the state statute prohibits that. Now, I think there are some building code limitations or provisions regarding number of persons in bedrooms, but as far as land use purposes, the state statute has preempted it, so...
We don't really have a choice.
Yeah, whether, yes.
Right.
We will not enforce the current definition of family.
Right, so I guess my question is, if you have kids and you take them off to college and you're anywhere near a college environment and they have housing in the perimeters, you'll see a huge number of people per square foot. I mean, they may put six or eight people in a small little house and the same issues with parking. And I think we even went through this with Airbnb and rentals, short-term rentals versus long-term rentals. We didn't want to have the big kind of events and so on where it brings a lot of people into a house with lots of cars and lots of activity and so on because it was uncharacteristic of our neighborhoods. So are you saying that we can't really put limits? I'm not saying that we are, but this new state statute says that we can't put any limits on the number of people that can live in a house. Is that right?
I would just bring it up.
Family or not?
It's a very short state statute. If counsel's indulgent, the maximum occupancy limit may not be established or enforced by any local government for any residential dwelling unit if the restrictions is based on familial or nonfamilial relationships among any occupants. Period. Done.
Done. So it's Salem telling us how to A-live, which I question. But we, not, I question their wisdom, I guess, of putting this down to us. But I guess I just look at it as it might be helpful to look into any other restrictions that we might need to have, if we can, to help prohibit us from having huge groups of people living in a small house. I'm just saying for neighborhood character and it's, it could become an issue.
You already have that issue based upon our definition of family, so...
Well, yeah, but I mean, the chances of having grandchildren, great-grandchildren, and everyone living is a lot different than having 15 roommates.
This does not prohibit restrictions that are directly targeting what the impacts are from the increased occupancy. I mean, if you say there are too many, if there's no parking, parking on the street can only get to a certain maximum.
Right.
Okay, there's only some places to park. If there's a noise problem, we have a noise ordinance to deal with that. I think it gets more direct, it requires more enforcement on the direct impacts than the perceived indirect impacts that might come from occupancy limits.
Okay.
But that's...
But we have things within our code that help prevent things getting out of control. Is that what you're telling me?
Well, I think it's, I think it's more so outside of the land use code. I think it's more of the nuisance, the noise and nuisance sections, the parking restrictions.
Okay.
Well, foot and fire and life safety.
And the building code.
Yeah.
Okay.
We can't just, there's already rules around, you can't just overcrowd a building. You know, that's another, it's a section of the code.
Right, I just want everyone that may be listening to make sure that we're clear that we have other things that, that this is not just an open door now, that if we pass this, that all of a sudden now...
Just like any building, we have the limit on the door outside.
Right, and I understand, the question that Ms. Ockert raises is the definition, is how we would interpret single housekeeping unit. And that is, that's in the code now. We're not adding to that, so that challenge is still there. What is a single housekeeping unit? Is people who occupy a common, you know, a common eating area? It's not divided up, there's not doors, lockable doors on each ones. It is, it is a single housekeeping unit where everybody sort of pitches in.
As opposed to...
Sometimes like the college, you know, the college students who come and go you know, over semesters, but they still operate as a single housekeeping unit.
Okay.
How many cats can they have? Is that your question, Counselor?
Point of order.
We have, as you've pointed out, we have a very robust code for municipal violations. I live in a neighborhood that has a lot of rental homes. And my fear, and anytime we get to talking about these things, is that it, oftentimes, we might be referring to these very rental homes when we're talking about multiple people, as Ms. Ockert pointed out, or college students or people working in town. Within the code, there's noise violations that you can't do. If Mr. Youngblood were here, we could call him up and he would run the number of times. I personally, over the years, have called him regarding things in my own neighborhood, for example, only to learn that it was perfectly acceptable. I feel fine that the language is fine. There's nothing we can do, as you pointed out. I think staff has done an excellent job of trying to pull this together. I'm not as worried about it, perhaps because I do live in an eclectic neighborhood that has a lot of rental properties that we've seen changes over the years. I appreciate what you're saying, but I don't see what the problem is.
Good, thank you. Okay, Counselor.
I just want to make a comment about the single housekeeping unit. I think, I don't really have a question or any objection, I just wanted to point out that, you know, as we are continuing to see just different patterns of how we live together, I think that we're seeing more and more multi-generational housing. As maybe where I was planning on moving my parents and my in-laws, as well as caretakers, live within our household. So in those cases there, there could be more than five people living in a single household. So I just want to be conscious about those types of situations where as we are moving into a different era, more and more people are living together in more multi-generational housings. As we are finding that it makes a lot of sense to be able to have relatives live to help take care of... have relatives live to help take care of children and things, and also be able to be close to our seniors, and so I think that's a good thing. I think that we should be careful that we don't, don't assume that a house that has more than five or six or eight people living together, that don't have familial ties, is necessarily out of character with our neighborhoods, and so just want to be careful of that when we talk about that.
Good point. Thank you. Okay, and Ms. Slender, please call the roll.
Mayor Buck?
Yes.
Counselors Verdict?
Yes.
Mance?
Yes.
Mbo?
Yes.
Winland?
Yes.
And Win?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. Mr. Francis, thank you, and to the Planning Commission, we thank them for their work on this, too. Okay, moving on to item 6.2, this is ordinance 2890, an ordinance clarifying, revising, and updating the Lake Oswego Code. We'll start with hearing procedure again from Mr. Buon, and he was also presenting on this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a legislative decision, which is a policy decision within the discretion of the city council. Public hearing process will be a presentation by staff, and then public testimony individuals, five minutes, others 10 minutes, as indicated, and any person may see here's their time testimony, but no case greater than 10 minutes. Does any counsel need to declare a financial conflict of interest?
No.
No.
All right. The city attorney's office, as indicated in the council report, assists the departments in pulling together what are hopefully, well, pulling together code amendments in sort of, that are ways to improve and clarify the code, to make things a little easier to understand, and to keep things up to date as far as statutory compliance, similar to the code, to what you just heard regarding amendments to LSC, LSC Chapter 50, the Community Development Code. That's a land use regulation, so it goes through one process, these are not land use regulations, so they just came directly to council, they didn't go through the planning commission after, so, so this would be the first public hearing on that. The proposed amendments relate to sewer connection requirements and what are acceptable alternative systems to sewer connection, sewer connection, stormwater management facility maintenance requirements, and then some sign, clarifications in the signage code, the sign code, and we've also gone through the code to remove some gender pronoun references and to update language relating to persons with disabilities. Members of the engineering department and the planning department are available to answer questions on the substantive matters.
Okay. Wonderful, thank you. Okay, well, with that, we will open the public hearing. Ms. Slender, if we have anyone signed up to testify?
No, ma'am.
Anyone here to testify on this, okay? We'll close the public hearing. Does anyone have any questions of staff on these amendments? All right, seeing none, would someone like to make a motion?
Move to enact ordinance 2890, clarifying, revising, and updating the Lake Oswego Code.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Can I just ask it?
Yes.
Just a general question, do you see anything in here that's controversial, or this is mostly housekeeping, is that correct?
I, I think it is, well, my personal thing, I think the department believes it is housekeeping, I tend to agree. I think the biggest issue is regarding the sewer connection requirements. Those have been most confusing, I think, both as far as when to connect and when the exemption for connection is required, and then what alternative systems are available. As indicated in the commentary, currently the code allows only a step system, which is a pressurized system, private system to the public system, I'm sure engineering could talk better on that. This pursuant to the wastewater treatment, wastewater plan, consistent with that, says no step system, and it talks about alternatives for that, so, which might be a septic system, standard septic system, or other, other systems which are acceptable to the county under DEQ standards, if they are too far to connect to the more than, for a single-family dwelling more than 300 feet from an existing sewer main, okay? That, that's the, the one with the most.
The one is.
The one most clarifying.
Most of it is pretty housekeeping oriented, right?
Yeah.
It's quite fascinating reading, by the way. But I'd go with the vote.
Okay, all right, Ms. Slender, please call the roll.
Mayor Buck?
Yes.
Counselors Verdict?
Yes.
Mance?
Yes.
Mbo?
Yes.
Winland?
Yes.
And Win?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Buon, to the team for your work on this. Okay, so we have a couple of study sessions tonight. The first one is on residential demolition and non-conforming development. We have some members, Director Siegel, and with some of his team, Mr. Monaloo.
No.
I think, I think we're just going to do musical chairs here.
Okay, okay.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the city council, Scott Siegel, Community Development Director, and joining me here at the desk is Brian Donner, Building Official, and we have a whole team here to assist you with the study session on demolition, so we will be calling up other staff as we go. This item is before you, following the work of the Middle Housing Code Advisory Committee, which considered a number of policy issues and potential strategies for integrating middle housing into Lake Oswego neighborhoods, as you've heard a lot about that, although this is a topic that has been really on our radar for some time now, really apart from middle housing, so I'm going to introduce it as an item that the Middle Housing Committee had explored, and was considering strategies that might help us retain some existing housing stock as a method of converting housing to, converting existing homes to middle housing, but really this is something that we've been tracking for some time now, in terms of what the city's current policy and processes for demolitions and opportunities for what I would say a process improvement around that. So what we'd like to do this afternoon is provide some background and really make this truly a study session, so we have, we have resources, we have examples of what we're going to be talking about, and we have the staff, the personnel here, who are actually involved with reviewing building permit plans and administer our development code and our building code, so we're hoping to get some feedback and direction on really three issues that we're looking for direction on, which I'll cover in just a moment. But I think probably the best way to think about this topic of demolition, and it's complicated, and in order to unpack it, there really, I kind of try to focus on three components of this. One is really the, well, the definition, and how do we define demolition? And when you think about that relative to a major remodel of a dwelling, and what is the difference? And that's really kind of a key question here, and something that I think is sort of raised, you know, heightened awareness in the community and concern about how the city defines this and, and, you know, what standards or procedures apply to one versus the other. So I think that's one area of inquiry here, is just how do we define demolition? The second is a related issue that is more of a land use issue that we refer to as non-conforming development, and we'll learn more about what that means in a moment, but really depending on how you define demolition or how you regulate it, and what rights or, or limitations are imposed upon property owners, the two really need, you know, should be coordinated in some way. So non-conforming development is another area of inquiry with the study session. And the third is really the demolition tax, which is a separate ordinance, a separate part of our, of our code that was adopted for different reasons, than, different purposes than how the regulations that we have for non-conforming development. I bring it up today only because the ordinance that created the demolition tax in 2019 has a sunset date on it, and you have some time to consider what you want to do with that, but if you do nothing, that tax will expire at the end of the year. So we'll be discussing that in just a moment. Sort of the order of operations here, Brian will be giving an overview of demolition process and how we define that and what the differences are between demolition and remodel. Then we're going to have Jessica Numanoglu, our Planning Manager, give you some background on non-conforming development and what the, sort of the policy issues are around that. Following Jessica, we have Jessica, Maury Collins, will be presenting some examples of plan reviews that our department has performed over the years that have, you know, where this issue has really come up, or just examples, I think, that are fairly typical. And we're also prepared to discuss the research that staff has prepared, we've looked at how other communities regulate demolitions and non-conforming development, so any, I think any of the planners here could respond to your questions about that. And then what I'd like to do is follow their presentations with some observations from a work group that, that I pulled together in order to really investigate this, these issues, that was both staff and also some community members, and also provide you with the feedback that the Planning Commission provided when they discussed this at a work session earlier in the month. With that, then we hope to, you know, obviously get your direction on those three topics, you know, how we define demolition, you know, how we address non-conforming development, and whether we should be exploring code changes with that, that's a separate, related question, and then if you have any input or direction on the demolition tax, we're looking for that as well. Any questions about the agenda today?
Okay.
Thank you. So with that, I'll hand it over to Mr. Don.
Okay.
You can just use the arrows.
Just the arrows?
Yep.
Up or down?
Down.
Brian Don, City of Lake Oswego Building Official, mayor and council. I'm just going to kind of explain and start with the definition that's current in our code, and then what the building department does with those demo permits or deconstruction permits versus whatever they decide to do versus remodel. So current definition right now, demolition or demolish means number, it's one of these three items, either removal of all the exterior walls, removal of the substructure in the part of the building, or construction above the lowest subfloor. Lowest subfloor is the bottommost structural floor laid as a base for a finished floor, such as none of the existing substructure is maintained, and number three would be alteration, abandonment, or removal of all the existing perimeter foundation, then it would be considered a demolition. So kind of an example would be, this picture shows that this is considered a remodel under our current definition. You can see that most of the house has been removed, they're pouring a new foundation, there's only one existing wall left up at the back of the home. Under our current definition, this is considered a remodel. This is also considered a remodel. You see the old house on the left, on the top right, there is, there's a, they left those walls up and they completely changed the look of the house. It's still considered a remodel under our current definition, a person would look at this and say, hey, that's a new house, but in reality, it's considered a remodel.
Mr. Don, if they had started from scratch, how would this house look different?
They could have made it look the same, but it wouldn't, you know, if they started from scratch, how would it look different? It would look, I mean, if that was their design and they wanted to build it, it would look the same.
Would it be on the same place on the lot?
Yeah. Most likely, well, actually not, if this was a non-conforming use, where they had preserved those walls because of they weren't meeting today's setback issues, then no, if they had completely teared it down, they had to rebuild it, they would have to move that house into the proper location for setbacks.
But they could have built this same structure, just situated differently on the lot.
Yes, if that was the case, if it was a non-conforming situation on that lot.
And if they were able to meet the setbacks.
Yeah.
I see, so in this case, they save the fee?
That's basically what I think happened on this one, I'm not sure what address this one was at, but.
Yeah, they would have, so with, with it being a remodel, they didn't have to pay the demolition tax, there was no notification that went to the abutting property owners if the property was approved for demolition, those are the two main differences in our process.
Counselor Win.
So that was my question. So that was, thanks for saying that, because that's what I wanted to find out, what exactly is, what's the advantage of having a project called a remodel versus a new construction? So for the reason you just said, saving the tax, the fee, and also the second part was non-conforming.
Yeah. Those are the, basically, the two reasons that they would do that is.
Oh, and notice, too, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, Counselor Win, I don't think the notice is necessarily, you know, an incentive to go with remodel, and I think it's just, it's part of our process, I think it's primarily the tax, and probably more so the ability to maintain the non-conforming development.
Okay.
Yeah, I currently am getting questions from customers who are designing homes or remodeling their home, major remodels they call it, and they are asking me how much of the house they need to leave up to classify it as a remodel to avoid the demo tax. And currently, I would consider a wall that has two studs and it's a completely built framed wall left up would be a remodel under our current definition.
But the house, the, that remodel, the house, isn't necessarily larger than a house that could be built from scratch?
It could go either way, it could go smaller, it could go larger.
It could go larger.
Yeah. Depending on the allowances on the lot for setbacks and stuff.
Right, so you're, you're entitled to, you know, a certain amount of lot coverage and floor area and setbacks, and so if the existing house is non-conforming to setbacks, then you're, you're, you know, taking advantage, you've got that reduced, you know, it's five feet to the property line instead of 10, so you've got that space that you're entitled to, you can, you can continue with that, and then on the other side of the property, you can build to the full extent of what the setbacks allow on the other side of the property, and then, of course, you're bound by the lot coverage limits and floor area, so you're not necessarily, you know, you're not going to get more lot coverage than what the code allows if that, if the house is not already not, you know, non-conforming as to lot coverage, you're not going to get a taller house if the, if you're not remodeling a house that's already in excess of the height limitation, so there are those controls on it.
And if, say it says, can we limit the square footage of the house? I, in, in other words, in a remodel versus a, a new house?
Well, the code already does limit the square footage of the house, whether it's a remodel or, I guess, a new, new construction, that's the, the floor area limit that is in the code, if the house, if it's an existing house.
Right.
That exceed, yeah, if it exceeds the floor area limit today, and, you know, I want to, I'm trying to think of a scenario where you might add a, you know, sort of a covered back porch area, and I mean, this would be a question maybe for, more for Jessica Numanoglu, you know, like, you could actually get a larger volume structure without adding floor area, and so, you know, there, it's really, it really depends on what the entitlement is today if you have that non-conforming right, if it's a non-conforming right to more floor area, or more height, or a reduced setback, and that's really where, you know, and then it's limited at that, you're not, you cannot make it any, you know, more non-conforming or move it even further out of conformance.
But if, say you had a, round numbers, if you were allowed a 4,000 square foot house and, and you had a 5,000 square foot house, if they remodeled it, they could stay a 5,000 square foot house, is that correct?
If that's what the code allows, I guess, maybe that's a good question. Pardon me?
Current code, and I see Jessica going.
Yeah, Jessica's probably saying maybe, and we'll hold that thought if we can. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, building code, state building code is what I deal with mostly, and they don't really have limits, but it's mainly limited by the city's building code.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, so the next screen is, shows the differences between what happens when they get a demolition or a remodel. The demo tax, yes, they have to pay during a demolition, remodel, no. Deconstruction, if they decide to dismantle and deconstruct the home, they get a credit, tax credit of $5,000 under demolition. With remodel, they don't have to. Courtesy to notice, notice to neighbors, that's what Scott mentioned, is that there's a notice that has to go out, they have to do it with demolition, with a remodel and they're leaving one wall up, they don't have to notify the neighbors. State hazmat certification, it's required on both for pre-2004 built homes for asbestos. We're required to collect that report, whether it's. We're required to collect that report, whether it's positive or negative, and we file it with the File for DQ purposes. Nonconforming development continues with demolition, no, they can't. If they completely demo it, they, they cannot put it in that nonconforming use, they have to put it within the allowed setbacks of the current code. And then demolition, or I mean, remodel, it depends. If they leave those walls up, a lot of times it's grandfathered in and they can keep those walls preserved. And if they integrate correctly with, and they're structurally safe and all that, then yeah, they can keep those setbacks that they're applying for. And that's all in the design of the home.
Yeah.
Okay. Applies to both demolitions and remodels, historic preservation for designated landmarks, erosion control applies, tree removal permits apply, tree protection plans apply. So there's, so both a remodel and a demolition, all that stuff applies still.
Great. Thank you, Brian. Were there any other questions for Brian? We can have them come up if you have, as we get into more building questions, Jessica's going to join us.
So is, is, this is the extent, the list that you just have up there, that's it? That, no, that, the one, that one right there is, that's the only difference? I mean, there isn't anything else that you have to do if you have a new house versus a remodel? No, I mean, they, both a new house and a remodel has to be, I mean, I don't want to get in the depth of building code requirements, but they, they have to meet today's construction codes. So, you know, a lot of times, if you're, if you're tearing out something and the code has changed from when the place was built and you're tearing it out, when you put it back, it's got to meet today's code. So, but that's all in the bill, the state building code. That's a whole nother aspect. Right. As an example, like a fire suppression system is now required in certain houses, right? Uh, no, it's not required in the state building code for residential homes. It is a, it is a, and I don't want to get into too much in the weeds here, but it is a request of the fire marshal because of access to get their fire apparatus into those locations where these homes are really tight construction, in areas where they can't bring the fire truck down into there. And so the fire marshal requests it. I back him up on that decision, but they have other options they can do for construction to avoid having to do that. Most of the time, they default to the fire suppression systems. So whether a remodel or a complete demolition, it doesn't matter? Yeah, exactly. It depends on what, the extent of that remodel. I mean, a remodel can be replacing a beam in a kitchen versus completely what I showed you in the pictures. Right. At this time, so.
Right. So this list could, probably should have, you know, building code, fire code, zoning, I mean, all of those things apply to all of the above, whether it's demolition or.
Right. So there's not an advantage to be a demolition versus a remodel on those things? Except for avoiding the tax, the demo tax. And, and they actually go for that because it's, they can get the engineering done on those walls that are, you know, that they're going to leave standing to avoid that tax and it's a little cheaper that way than trying to pay the tax sometimes.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Brian. And I think Jessica's going to come up and cover our next section.
We have more. We have more.
Good evening. Jessica Numanalu, Planning Manager. And I'm going to talk about nonconforming development and to relate it to, why it's related to the demo tax, why we're talking about both of these together. So while the definition of demolition will determine whether or not a demolition tax applies, it is interrelated with nonconforming section of Chapter 50 of our code because a lot of times they will, they, the builders or the developers, will leave a portion of the dwelling, could be to avoid the demo tax, but also another advantage is because they may want to maintain some existing nonconformities. And that's where you see them leave up part of the structure that doesn't comply with current codes. And what nonconforming development is, it's development that was legal when it was originally built, but due to either a subsequent code change or perhaps they were annexed in from another, from the county, they don't comply with our current regulations. And the City of Lake Oswego, I would say, probably has a lot of nonconformities, maybe compared to other cities. I haven't done an analysis on this, but when you think about it, you know, we adopted infill standards, as an example, in the early 2000s that adopted standards like, that we didn't have before. We used to just have basically setbacks, lot coverage and height. And then when we adopted these infill standards, which addressed concerns by the neighborhood of the bulk scale and character of new development with, integrating within existing neighborhoods, we added things like floor area maximums, front yard setback plane, side yard setback plane, garage appearance and location, et cetera, et cetera. We have a number of standards today that we didn't have a while ago. And every time we adopt a standard or we change our code, that could have the ripple effect of making existing development nonconforming. So our code allows, the purpose of our code is, it's pretty generous in terms of nonconformities, allows people to retain those nonconformities. But eventually, when they do voluntary demolition, et cetera, we eventually will get compliance and that may be part of the dwelling or it may be the entire dwelling if the whole dwelling is demolished. And in terms of what is allowed, there are four basic things that are allowed under our nonconforming standards. One is continuance. Continuance means that you just keep it as it is, and if you never touch your house, you get to keep it for as long as it's viable, a structure. It allows also basic maintenance, so you could do things like change the siding, change your roofing, you could even punch in a window, paint, all of those things would be allowed. What it doesn't allow is structural changes to it. So you wouldn't be able to completely tear down a structural wall and rebuild it. Obviously, that would lengthen the viability of that nonconforming structure. So there are limitations, but you can do basic maintenance. So if you have leaking windows, you can replace those, that type of thing. You can also do additions, so you can keep the nonconforming portion, you can add to it, but anything that you add must comply fully with current regulations. So for instance, if your house is at a five-foot setback and it now requires 10 feet, you can't extend the wall in an addition at a five-foot setback. You have to bring that in an additional five feet to comply. And then finally, the fourth thing that you're allowed to do is change the roof pitch. And what that allows people to do, it was addressed, it addressed a concern where you had a lot of flat roofs that structures, if you think along Lakeview Boulevard, there's a lot of garages right at the front setback or, or in the front setback. And if you had a flat roof and you had problems maintaining that, there really wasn't much you could do with it because our, our setbacks are three dimensional. So you can't, just because you're within a setback, you can't just build on top of that or increase the bulk on top. So it allows them to do some modest change in roof pitch that isn't outright allowance. You don't have to get a variance for that. And it's up to six feet change in height. And also, you can't go above the, the base height of the zone. So it allows you some flexibility with that existing nonconforming structure. If a structure is damaged by a cause other than an intentional act, so a fire, flood, that type of thing, anyone would be able to reconstruct to the extent that the previous structure was nonconforming. So that's allowed. But if you intentionally damage it, for instance, through partial or full demolition, anything that you rebuild must fully conform to current regulations. So Mr. Counselor Wenland's question about the 5,000 square foot dwelling, if it was 5,000, you're only allowed 4,000 today, would they be able to, you know, keep that? Yes, as long as they maintain that nonconformity, they could keep that and possibly do some changes to it, but it would be pretty limited if, if you're over your floor area, because there's not really much you can add because it's going to add floor area. An example, which you're going to see in, when Ms. Maury Collins comes up, she's going to show you some examples where folks have, have maintained their nonconforming lot coverage. That's a very common thing that folks want to do, and setbacks. Those are most commonly what we see when, when folks want to retain a portion of a dwelling. So there are three perspectives for the council to consider in terms of nonconformities. One is the perspective of the neighborhood. And you saw the example where someone left one wall or left two walls, and then, you know, it's unrecognizable to the neighborhood as the prior structure. But because they maintain those two nonconforming walls, they're within a setback. And, but, but, but from the perspective of the neighborhood, they're getting a brand new dwelling. And I think there are many folks who would argue that if you're getting down to that far, you should fully comply with the code because now they're, they're going to have to live with those nonconformities into the setbacks for much longer because now that house has essentially been rebuilt. So that's one issue. Another issue has to do with the review by staff. It is very complicated to review these plans when they come in to determine, especially, as you'll see in examples from Ms. Maury Collins, we're not structural engineers, we're not plans reviewers. And so when planning staff are trying to review this, if we don't catch something, that could, that could result in a mistake later on, which unfortunately has occurred. And, and it can just be very difficult, you know, because there's no particular standard way for people to show when they're retaining walls or when they're not. And it just becomes very difficult. And, and I think that will become obvious when, when Ms. Maury Collins goes over the examples. And then also, lastly, from the applicant's perspective, one of the things that commonly occurs is that they will say, yes, we're going to retain these two walls so we can keep these setbacks, they've redesigned the entire house. When they go out there to do the actual demolition, they may find that the walls don't have proper footings or that there is dry rot. And in those cases, that can be very costly to the applicant because now they're in a situation where they can't retain those walls. And as I said before, when you demolish them, it has to fully comply. So that means they may have to redesign their project or they may have to stop and apply for a variance, and those have also occurred. Other things that we've seen is that they've said they were going to retain the walls and then the, it's just demoed anyway by the contractor. Maybe they didn't realize it or they felt it wasn't worth saving. We've had that situation. And again, costly to the applicant because they'll have to stop their project and either redesign or, or get a variance. So that's a basic overview. I hope, I hope you have an understanding. Before I pass it on to Jessica Maury Collins, which will kind of elaborate on what I've discussed, do you have any questions?
Counselor Wenland. So what if an existing house is a variance that was approved five years ago or whatever, 10 years ago that they did some project? Does the variance stick if they do a remodel? Or, I mean, in, in other words, if they've gone, because it, it can be costly to get a variance, they have to pay for all kinds of things to get it. Would it stick if it's a remodel but not as a demolition?
Okay. So if they leave the portion that they got the variance for, they get to keep that. That variance is good as long as they retain that. And they add on in other areas where they add on has to comply. If they fully demolish it, I don't know if they would have a right to reconstruct it. I think the variance then goes away because it's expired.
Well, I think it depends upon the nature of the variance. Certainly, like a residential infill design variance, which is, is design based, if you take away the building, then the variance goes away. If you're looking at a hardship variance, major variance, that's based upon the physical circumstances of the property. So we would look to the staff, the staff report analysis to some degree, but if, you know, if, if you justify, say, you're over your floor area requirement because you have a small lot, I think you could rebuild with that smug, same floor area, that larger floor area based upon the variance because the lot hasn't changed. Something you hear about that, so.
Right. Okay. So it kind of depends, but at least the variance would be, a person wouldn't have to reinvest and get the variance reapproved then?
If it's, if it's design based, they would.
Yeah.
If it's a RID, okay?
Right.
Then, and if they tear the house down, then the design is gone. So yes.
Right. But that could be a reason why people would want to do a remodel versus a teardown because they've had some sort of a variance that's been approved that would be, I'm trying to figure out all the different little ways of people scheming, I don't know, scheming, planning to get around the rules, I guess, is what, because you guys are way too nice. I think that, I mean, you, you kind of are saying very politely what people do, but I really would love to get into the, the core root of it because, basically, we make the rules and the contractors are going to push it as far as they, and developers to the, to agree, which is, that's how rules and developers work. And I'm, I'm fine with that, but I just want to make sure that we know the reasons and the outcomes of, of, I don't know if it's loopholes you want to call it, or just ways how they really get into, so that we can make great code so that everyone's relatively happy, I guess, is, is the main thing.
And if I can just follow up, and if, if a person got a RID approval for a side yard setback, that's design based, even, I think, even if they left that sidewall there but took down the rest of the house, you know, our, our requirements say that you, if you're going to modify the house, then you need to, I think, apply for a new variance because that wall for, under RID, was based upon their whole design of the house. And if any part of that design of the house is gone, based upon, then they would need to, as they rebuild the new part of the house, they'd have to reapply for RID for that new wall because you've got a new design of the house.
Yeah, that makes sense. I agree. I think for minor variances and major variances, though, that would not be the case. I think they could, as long as they retained the portion that they got the variance for, they would be able to keep it. Yeah.
Things like, like let's say they get a, and maybe a deck or a porch or like a covered area, you know, if they, if they got the RID, then they could retain that even if they changed the house.
Not, not if it was approved through a RID, because the RID, even though they're getting it just for that one portion, it, we look at the overall design. So that's the difference between that type of variance versus minor variance or major variances, which is, is looking at limited impacts. It's not a design based variance.
Right. Or maybe I'm saying the position of it. Maybe if it's, if they keep it and it's still on the back of the lot, maybe they, they could go over three feet or whatever, or five feet over the allowance, and they got a RID for that, would that continue?
I think if they partially demolished or demolished the dwelling, the answer would be no.
Okay.
In that instance.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jessica.
You'll be back.
I just wanted to say something with regard to the examples that you're going to see here in a moment. One of the issues that the work group and then the planning commission began to explore is just, if you're going to recalibrate this, you know, definition of demolition and it's something more than, you know, the one wall left standing, but it's obviously not the entire shell of the building, what is it? And so we were looking at different metrics, including exterior walls, percentage of exterior wall area retained or floor area retained or some combination of the two. So I think the examples will kind of touch on that, too.
Great.
Okay. Good afternoon. I don't know if I've, I've met all of you, I've met some of you. I'm Jessica Maury Collins and I work reviewing plans for compliance with planning and zoning standards. So these are some of the examples that I've come across in the short time that I've been in this position since October. So we've seen quite a few and these are only a couple. I've got more if you want them. So this first example shows the plans for that, that photo that Scott had brought up or I think Brian had brought up of the, just single wall and partial foundation that was remaining on the site. So this project, if you can see here, there's, the existing footprint is shown in green and the new proposed footprint is shown in, in purple. So this is just to give an idea of what's, what's existing and what's new. Here is the foundation plan showing what they proposed to keep of the existing structure of that foundation and what they proposed to demolish or replace. So you can see that they're keeping just that, that portion at the very rear of the structure. And you'll see in a moment why. This is the building envelope of the lot and the portion of the existing structure that is legally nonconforming to, to the dimensional requirements for that lot. So that rear portion of the, the structure kind of sticks out of the building envelope and that's, that's what they proposed to keep. And here's that site photo again of what that looked like on the ground. So this next site, the similar, you know, these are all major remodels, not, not new builds or demolition. This is the existing versus new development for the, the site plan. So you can see the walls that they proposed to keep in green and the new, new or replaced portions of the, the build in purple. And then here's the foundation. And then here's the foundation plan with a similar, uh, kind of schematic. And, uh, here you can kind of see that they, they're keeping everything, um, up at the garage, and they had a reason for that. Um, namely, this property is located in the R six zone, which has some requirements for where, uh, carport or garage can take access. Uh, if they, if they have an alley access for a lot, uh, that's where the, the garage or carport is supposed to take access. Uh, in this case, the existing dwelling had a garage on the street side. Um, so this was the portion of the structure that they retained. Um, and here you can kind of see that again on the floor plan, a couple of the walls proposed for retention, um, and then a lot of the structure proposed to be removed and replaced. And here on the elevations, um, you can see that they have that front-facing garage. Uh, they also have a, uh, a substandard porch to be, zone that this is located in requires a, a porch of certain width and depth. Um, so I, you know, I'm not sure how they, uh, what strategy was used to, to retain the non, um, you know, insufficient porch. Uh, the garage was kept up at the front, uh, taking access off the street. And then here's the proposed elevation, so, um, you know, this is, again, the existing structure, and then this is what the new structure looked like. Um, so, I mean, it's somewhat of a resemblance, uh, but, but, you know, mostly in the garage area. And the last example I'll go over, uh, is another project on Cabana Lane. Um, so this is the demolition plan showing what was proposed to be removed and what's proposed to be retained, uh, with the retained walls shown in green, um, a little bit hard to see, there's not, not much that they're keeping. Here's the foundation plan, a little bit more that they're, they're retaining and, uh, getting rid of, versus, or, you know, versus removing and replacing. Here's the existing and proposed elevations. So the existing elevation is on the bottom, and then I, uh, just kind of transposed that shape onto the top and then showed, you know, what's new, um, that they were building on top, uh, adding a second level. Um, and then here's the, the other side elevation and the front and the rear. Um, so this is one of those, those structures that kind of has that, uh, detached garage along the lake that's, uh, that's pretty close up to the front, front lot line. And here's, there's kind of a summary of some of the nonconformities that this site is working with. Uh, they're nonconforming to their side, uh, side and front setback. Um, they are also nonconforming to some garage appearance and location standards, uh, which require that the, um, a detached garage can, can be in front of the primary structure, but would need to be sideloading, um, and can't be more than sixty percent, uh, it should be less than sixty percent of the width of the front elevation. Uh, they're also over on their lot coverage by about seven hundred square feet. Um, so that, that kind of square up at the top corner of the structure is just kind of to help visualize about how much seven hundred square feet is, um, which I think was, as, as a plans reviewer and, you know, wanting, wanting plans to comply, it was a little frustrating to see, um, you know, if they brought the structure into compliance on one standard, it would improve compliance on the other ones. But, you know, if the, if the code allows it, I, uh, you know.
But essentially, they had a twenty-nine-hundred-square-foot house. They bought it, and then under code, they could only have a twenty-two-hundred-square-foot house. Is that correct?
Uh, yeah, it would be a similar situation.
So if they, if they did a new house, they could only build a twenty-two-hundred-square-foot house?
Well, that's a lot.
Yeah, it's a lot.
That's a lot, yeah.
Or a lot.
Floor, floor area, they would be able to, um, add additional internal square footage if it, you know, wasn't creating more of a footprint on the lot. Uh, but yeah, in terms of what they could cover, uh, of the lot.
So that would be a reduction by a fairly significant amount?
Yeah, the, the new standards would definitely reduce the, the overall footprint of the house.
Right.
You had, you had more square footage by like adding a, a layer?
You can, yeah, the, the second story would have to meet current standards. So they kind of, um, actually did use that strategy. So you can see how on the one side, the second level has kind of stepped, stepped in a bit. And that's, uh, because it's, it's meeting the current setback, whereas the, the lower level is nonconforming to that setback.
Okay.
Uh, so in terms of plan review, um, some of my, my concerns are that, uh, for our current standards, we don't require any, any kind of demolition plan for a remodel. Um, whereas, you know, a, a new build, we would have to have a demolition on file for any existing structures on site. Um, so it can take a little bit of legwork to track down a demolition plan to get, get those plans from, uh, developers. And, um, existing elevations are, are not frequently provided. Uh, sometimes I, you know, they're easy to get upon request, but other times I think it's a little bit harder for people to get the existing elevations together so that, um, you know, it can, the existing structure can be compared to the new structure in terms of the nonconforming code. Um, there's also a lot of ways to, to measure what's existing versus new, uh, and that can be a little bit confusing, especially for, you know, someone like myself who has a background in planning, uh, but not necessarily in building or any kind of structural, uh, code. Um, and yeah, it takes some time to verify whether, you know, a structure even is legally nonconforming. Sometimes there's, you know, sometimes you can make a pretty good guess, but, uh, you know, finding the original approval, um, verifying that, that what is out of compliance with the code is legally, uh, nonconforming. And then, um, as we kind of move forward and figure out new processes to address this, uh, we're considering, you know, planning to have some inspections of, uh, development like this where they're, you know, remodeling a, an existing nonconforming structure to get somebody on site just to kind of make sure that what they said they're going to keep, they are keeping. Um, which I think will pose some challenges for timing on staff's part, making sure that the inspection occurs, uh, in that window of time after deconstruction, but before the new build begins. Um, and, and making sure that the, the applicant and the customer has, has sufficient notice that they have to call in that inspection. Um, and then also kind of, you know, coordinating among the different departments, uh, you know, getting engineering perspective where it's needed and building perspective where it's needed. Uh, you know, just all take some time, so.
Any questions for Jessica?
Questions? No, thank you very much. Those are, uh, very helpful examples, yeah.
Thank you. Uh, so just real briefly, as you can see, this is complex, and there are several different dimensions to it. Um, just putting the question of, you know, how do we define demolition aside and putting the tax ordinance aside for a moment, and just focusing on this issue of nonconforming development. Um, the work group looked at this, uh, the planning commission began to kind of look at this. And really, I think the, the consensus among the work group members was, um, that we, if we were going to redefine demolition, if we were going to establish some threshold for that, that it ought to be based on some objective metric, you know, like surface area of exterior walls, something that someone in Jessica's position can actually measure, and we have computer-aided drafting or, you know, tools to do that, um, or floor area, or some, some combination of the two. We considered what some other jurisdictions do, and that is, uh, the, a diminu- reduction in value of the structure. So, when we receive building permit applications, the applicant is, you know, required to provide information that the building department has a, really a model that they use for determining the value, you know, of those improvements, and that's how the building permit fees are assessed. But that, you know, that's not, I mean, that's a theoretical sort of approach. And it's, uh, and some jurisdictions do use, you know, value, reduction in value for like residential structure for, uh, determining when a nonconforming development has to be, you know, brought into full conformance. We do have that standard or that, that methodology for commercial or for, uh, structures other than dwellings. And it's, it seems to work fairly well because I think we don't have that many situations where, you know, someone is proposing to remodel an existing nonconforming commercial building. Um, but I think that in, in the instances when it does come up, um, I think the, kind of the, the means and methods of construction are more straightforward in some regards to like a, a single-family development in our community. It's very site-specific, you know, really, almost every home is a custom home. When you think about the topography, you know, the design requirements of the, their clients, the materials and, you know, means of construction. So, we really were focusing on, you know, if you were to redefine demolition and establish some threshold, that it ought to be based on something more objective like surface area of walls or floor area. So, um, and then on, in terms of some of the other observations that you've heard from staff, you know, thinking about those three perspectives that Jessica Numangu noted, you know, that from the neighbor's perspective, is this a demolition or is it not? I mean, if, if the perception is that, you know, that this is a complete replacement of a dwelling, you know, notwithstanding the one wall that's left standing, you know? Um, at least for purposes of noticing, you know, the courtesy notice that goes out to let people know that, hey, you're gonna be, you may be temporarily inconvenienced, you know, by a demolition, and then perhaps the tax, that this would be, you know, appropriate to redefine or recalibrate how we define demolition. And I think on the question of nonconforming development, it's a somewhat different, um, analysis because you're really talking about property rights, and you're talking about, um, in some ways, trade-offs for design and neighborhood character because that existing nonconforming house that is there and is on slot, you know, slid over on the one side of the property, or it's, you know, it's maximizing really the side-to-side envelope of that property. Think about a lot of the narrower lots that we have, particularly around the lake. And, you know, so, sort of the trade-off there is if we were going to, you force more of those remodels or those rebuilds to come into full conformance, the setbacks increase, and that allowable lot coverage or floor area is pushed out, you know, into other areas of the lot, the rear yard, for example. So, you know, there could be trade-offs and different impacts, whether it's tree removal or proximity to neighbors on one side or the other. So, you know, those are some of the things to consider. Um, I think the administrative perspective is really valid, uh, you know, just thinking about, um, sort of efficient and timely review of permits and how long it takes and what sort of information or engineered plans we're gonna require. Uh, you know, what is the burden of proof for demonstrating that, that, you know, these walls that you're proposing to retain are in fact structurally sound? That's all part of the, the review process that we need to consider if we end up changing the rules, particularly around nonconforming development. And then the inspections, I think it's just good kind of process improvement that we would be interested in doing, you know, in any event, whether or not you decide to change the, the code. We're looking at, um, just sort of stepping up our plans and mental requirements and inspections to try to provide a better, you know, customer service, so they're not having to, you know, redo plans or, you know, surprises. So, uh, those are some of the comments or consensus points from the, the work group. Uh, the planning commission met, um, recently and had a similar study session to what you're having here. And their, their feedback was, uh, we, yes, we understand, we, I think, see the, the sense of urgency here, particularly around, you know, how we define demolitions, how we kind of approach that. Um, they think, you know, their feedback was that this is, you know, complicated. There are a lot of potential consequences, perhaps some unintended consequences if we don't spend the time to really study this. They want to see more examples from other cities. Uh, they're also looking at a more sort of tiered approach that might, uh, be more, I guess, progressive in some ways, or not, not punitive for the smaller home, you know, the owner of the smaller, uh, property that, you know, would pay the same demolition tax that the owner of the much larger house pays today. So, you know, they were concerned about that as well. Um, and as you've heard, you know, they're prepared to work on this if that's the council's direction. Uh, the planning commission's scope would really focus on nonconforming development because as, as you, as you know, the demolition tax is a budgetary issue. It's not a land use regulation, so that would be, you know, strictly under the council's purview. And as well as the, the demolition process. So, building code, tax code, council review, and adoption of any changes. Uh, nonconforming development, planning commission review, recommendation to council. So these are the questions that were in the staff report, and, you know, we're all here to answer any questions that you might have. And I just appreciate any feedback or direction. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, well, thank you very much. I appreciate you and your team and the way you've presented, this is very complex issue. You all did a great job, uh, breaking it down to the, um, important topics.
We can do this in five minutes.
It's very straightforward. So, why don't, as a council, why don't we kind of take this one, and I know there's, there's some overlap, but if we can kind of take it one issue at a time, that would make it, you know, easy for us to provide the, the feedback. So, we'll start with, uh, the definition of, um, uh, demolition. I think everyone's kind of on the same page here in terms of revising, um, this, uh, revising this, this definition. Um, one, in a way that provides administrative relief, so things are more streamlined, but also provides the noticing, the, uh, the tax, and is more congruent with just what people see, you know, on the, on the ground. Um, I do want to ask if, you know, in, in thinking and thinking about this, and we want to, well, I think for, for me, it looked to, um, um, both the streamlined, the administrative part, but, but preserving existing structures and doing more to encourage remodeling. But is that, is, 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 is preserving existing structures encouraging more remodeling kind of i- in, in conflict with the desire to have structures come into compliance with the current code?
I think, yeah, yes, those two objectives could sort of work across purposes, so you'll want to, that's, I think, the, sort of the key is setting that threshold appropriately, you know, so that enough of the structure would have to be retained for it to be considered a remodel. And, you know, then beyond that, it is, you're, you're willing to trade off that, you know, loss of the structure for bringing, uh, new construction into conformance with the code, which, as you've heard from, you know, neighborhood representatives is something that is of value, yeah.
Exactly, exactly. Because what we, I think that we don't want to do is encourage, encourage the teardowns. You know, we don't want to do more to encourage the, inadvertently encourage more teardowns. Because while, um, I know we hear feedback on maintaining the nonconformities, we hear the same amount of feedback on the number of, of just teardowns when then, you know, a, the, a new house with a different footprint comes in, and then, you know, that results in the trees coming down and, and whatnot as well. So, um, I think for the, um, uh, definition of demolition itself, um, are we all on board with revising this definition to meet like a fifty-one percent? And was there a, a, a recommendation on the percent of the, the, whether it be the, the walls or the?
Yeah, the work group considered retention of at least fifty percent, I think, and, and I think actually they were, they were considering, you know, we didn't actually fully deliberate, they didn't fully deliberate on that. So, the, the two different alternatives that were, that I think are in the, kind of the sample code amendments were fifty percent retention, or, you know, removal of more than fifty percent or removal of more than eighty percent were the two kind of numbers that they had dealt with, but those are somewhat, you know, arbitrary.
Okay.
And I think, you know, fifty percent is a number that has some precedent, at least in our code, in terms of valuation and other examples that we've seen. So, I think that's where staff would begin with this. You know, of course, it's subject to further study and your direction.
Let me ask my colleagues, what, what do you all think? Now, let's say there's a structure, and they don't want to add necessarily area, or, or maybe they want to add, but just a little, a little bit. Let's say maybe they want to add twenty percent to the, to the structure, but maybe it's old. And so, they take down, but they replace, you know, and, and let's say it's the same footprint, no additional footprint. Uh, so in a way, preserving the footprint, preserving the landscape, you know, on the, on, 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 on the site. Do we see that as a, you know, how do we evaluate that? Where you're just taking down, you just say, well, this, it's a good, it's a good shape. It, uh, fits well in with, with the neighborhood, but it's just old. You know, the walls, they're not good, they need to be replaced. You know, is that unrealistic? Would no one even do that?
It's demolition, I mean, there's, you know, a cat is a cat.
You're keeping the same shape, the same footprint. I don't know why you would just take it all down and put it all back.
It's old, let's say.
So what?
It's, yeah.
No, I mean, it's, it's not, well.
There's old structures all over the place.
But it, it would, they're just wanting to remodel it basically, but not add on to it.
But then why would you take it all down?
Yes, they don't.
Well, it needs to be, let's just say.
Well, it could come out to, it's gotta be a lot more costly to remodel versus start from scratch.
But if you're, you're keeping the same box, the same shape, and you're not... Yeah, you can still do an interior remodel.
But there's issues with the exterior.
Yeah, but you can, and the...
This is not a situation that ever happens.
Yeah, I, I think the bigger issue is, I, I don't know, I, I look at it as, we need to define where the, the homeowner and the developer are going to use the system to their advantage for, whether it's a demolition or if it's a, if it's a remodel. And I, I guess I have one question, are there any tax implications, property... one question. Are there any tax implications, property tax implications for remodel versus, I mean, how do we evaluate? Because I, I'll tell you the story. When coming from California, you would go through every neighborhood and it was literally, they let you have a door frame for a remodel because you would be reassessed at new values and you could have an assessment go from $600,000 to $5 million. And all of a sudden, your property taxes go from $8,000 to $60,000. Now, if you did a remodel and you said you spent a million dollars, they would assess you now at a million six, which is much better. So, I don't know from, from our standpoint, there could be economic, financial incentives to do that as well.
Yeah, I think maybe the situation in California is, you know, Proposition 13, something like that, where the assessed values were frozen.
Right, but we're, we're assessed.
We're assessed and our assessed value can go up, I think, 3% a year. I'm kind of looking for someone like that.
Right, yes, that's correct, right.
Yeah, so there's that. I don't, so the, I guess the values that are, that are in the building permit, I believe the county, we could come back. So, we would come back with some options and, you know, and you could kind of work through this. But that's one of the questions that we can kind of track down. It's just like, how does the county use our, you know, valuation data from building permits to look at assessed values? I don't know.
Because I think that's part of the, we need to get to the core roots of why people are going to do a, you know, tear down everything but one wall.
Right.
What are, what are the incentives? And, yeah, what's the why? And, and I think in the bigger picture of things, I think it's, yeah, I'm not quite sure I'm at 50. I don't think I'm at 80. I don't know. We need to come up with something that's reasonable. But I do think that there, there needs to be a, something so that they're not leaving one wall up or one. I just think that's just kind of like a, they're circumventing the system. So...
Yes, okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I think for me, it's very clear. Like, you know, we, words may have some sense, you know, and we are poets, you and I, we understand what words are.
But this is one area where we want to use literal, we don't want to be figurative.
Yeah, that's why.
You know, metaphors a lot.
That's why I know metaphors that, in English, demolition is the dismantling, raising, destroying or wrecking of any building or structure or any part thereof. Demolition work involve many of the hazard, you know, you have that. So, in French, démolir, c'est défaire, un abattement, pièce à pièce. Démolir, it's like to destroy piece by piece is to, to demolish a wall, an old neighborhood. What we've seen here, like, for a serious person, they were all demolition. That's not like you leave a wall on a house. It's demolition. If you go to the percentage, we're gonna be in trouble because I'm not a building professional, but I can see a foundation. What's the percentage of a foundation in a house? So, someone can leave a person a foundation and some walls and say, oh, I am at 50%. And you, you won't consider, but neighbors will see as a demolition. It's destroyed and dismantled. So, we should consider, we have, if you go percentage, I'm not the professional, I'm pretty sure you folks know how much, you know, is the, the foundation in a building. Or if you have one wall and a foundation, it's not more than 50%. So, it's a, a cat is a cat, you know, you know, not like you can have a cat for the cat person and say, it's a cat. But you can have a tiger, it's still a cat. But it's not the cat you have in your house.
Right.
So, if you demolish three walls, you leave one, it's demolition. We have to be like clear and, you know, and make our workers very, you know, like, put them at ease. When I heard what Ms. Jennifer was saying, it's hurtful and difficult. They're put in a thing that they're the one who will have to decide. We can make it clear for them. I'm not saying we are making it here. It's very dangerous to make a decision here. We can't. But we can...
It's a work session, we won't.
Yeah, work, yeah. And then come, and have technician will come and brief us and tell us what are percentages and stuff so we can define the word demolition. That's why I think it's dangerous to venture there on making definition right now here. But, yeah, but we can see that what they show here, it's demolition. It's very clear. They build another house. It's not the house that was there. So, for that reason, they should pay all the dues. And demolition also should be more expensive because a developer, $15,000 is nothing. They will demolish and rebuild. Maybe the non-conforming things will be their problem. But if it's not that, they will demolish. So, we should make it hard on anyone to demolish a house, to preserve what Ms. was saying.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Councilman.
Okay. It's a really complex issue. You know this. I like a numerical, I like a numerical percentage because it will work well with computer programs and future ways of looking at this. What that percentage would be, I would have to leave it up to staff and ask staff to please look at that and see if it's a reasonable approach, what other cities are doing. Feel free to cite, you know, best practices and examples and bring that back. I truly, in my mind, that's where I go. I do understand the complexities of this, but we need to, we do need to fix this. And you put in a tremendous amount of work into it. So, thank you for that. That's my comment on that definition, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Counselor Lynn?
Yes, I think certainly a numerical number is important. But I think also, when we think about what constitutes a demolition and remodel, I think we also need to take consideration to intent. I think that, you know, you know, we talked about, you know, a straight face test, right? You know, can you really with a straight face tell me this is a remodel when nothing, the only that keeps this from being a complete demo or rebuild is just, you know, just a numerical calculation that allows you to get this exception. So, I think that, you know, that we, we need to have some sort of, certainly a percentage of original structure retained, but also have some way through some type of decision tree or something to say that, you know, does this house essentially, is it really improving upon what we had, but similar use, or is it a completely different type of house altogether? And so, I think that that's something we've got to figure out. I mean, that's, I believe that's the staff to figure out what other jurisdictions might have done to find out how do we also include intent here too. Because, you know, on paper, that's one thing. I think if you just do the bare minimum, I think that's the minimum standard. But I think we need to be able to figure out what's, how do we capture the intent? How do we capture, you know, are you just trying to use this as a loophole, as you say, Counselor Wendlin? Or is it really intent to really insert, to preserve a certain character of the neighborhood? I think that, in my mind, when I think about a remodel, there's something we want to preserve and make better versus demolish and make new.
Right. But we do have to get that numerical, because that's the trouble there happens.
Yeah, yeah, we'll start with the numerical, that's baseline. But then also figure out another way, that's where we're, we're, we have to rely on maybe staff or maybe you can use research to find out. What, how do we capture that, that intent?
I don't know if I agree with that. I don't know if I agree with that. I think it needs to be numerical. It needs to be very objective. Because we, with this housing, we can't have these subjective standards.
Right.
I think it's, I don't, I, I disagree with going down this intent road.
Richard, what are you gonna say? Oh, yeah, I'm, I think you have to come back with us with a percentage. It has to be, you guys have to have a calculation. It's, there's no way around it. And I, part of it is I'm, I feel that people buy here and they have property rights and that if, my understanding is that it was a fairly active, engaged meeting last night when we were talking about just the bridge going over Lakewood Bay, and there was 55 people here all giving full input on how we should manage our project. That's the community we live in. Wait till it's their, their domicile, their home, they become quite aggressive, quite all-knowing. So, we need to give our staff clear direction, I think. And whether it's a percentage, I think that's really what you need and we need to figure out what that is. I don't know how the heck you would calculate it. And that's, that's something, maybe why we have somewhat of a loose definition now because it's a really difficult, are we gonna now have to have Cray computers, if they even make those anymore, in the background for you guys to figure out all these formulas? I don't know in the business how that's done, but you guys can figure that out. I do think that we have to be cognizant of, I find it interesting in the statistics of how many people actually demolished versus remodeled. And we had, what was it, 30? 30 pretty much probably would have been demolitions, but 15 actually paid the tax and then 15 didn't, but they probably should have. Is that right?
I think percentage-wise, you might be close. So, we typically see between like 50 and 70 new single-family homes in a year. That's what we've been seeing. It has been higher than that. And, you know, most recently, about 30 demolitions a year. So, you know, of those new dwellings, quote new dwellings, how 30 are, as a result of demolition, they, they come in. The remodels, I think we had, we had about 30 single-family remodels that were additions. So, where they were adding floor, floor area. And of those, 30, about a third of those were non-conforming developments. So, I don't know if that helps kind of, we're talking about demolitions, but, you know, but historically about half of the new homes have been replacement homes.
Right. But I can certainly see the whole idea of doing a remodel to keep your non-conforming items. I mean, that's a, that is everywhere, even in your East Coast. I mean, there's people that, I mean, that's a huge thing. If once they, even if it happened in 1669, they're going to keep it.
If you're actually remodeling it.
Yeah, well, they'll remodel instead of starting over because they want that particular, like the garage or the, the whatever it is. And so, people will use the system to their advantage. And that's what we have to figure out.
So, it sounds like everyone's on the, on the same page with the demolition.
Well, if I can clarify, I think, Ms. Mark, with all due respect, I think that, I want to clarify what I'm, what I'm meaning by intent. I think that if we're gonna talk about a remodel because it preserves those variances, and I think we talked about this before about, you know, if the intent is to, to preserve that variance, to protect a tree, protect some sort of, I presume within, in terms of a tree, if there's a way we can preserve that variance and we call, by calling a remodel, then I think it's worth, I think the intent there is to preserve a tree.
Well, that's getting to the next question of the non, of the non, the non-conformity. Let, let me, so, so I think we're on the, coming back with the options for the demolition, on the demolition definition.
What I'm hearing is that...
We should... One question quickly of clarification to Director Siegel, and then I'll leave it be. None of what we're talking about in this definition and people remodeling is in conflict with the state 2001. Is it, this is argued by encouraging remodeling, for example? We're not in conflict in any way with state bill 2001?
Well, I think on the question of demolitions, no. I like that. On the non-conforming development question, again, no. If we regulate the same as single family, we have to be, have to parity with single family, which is what we're talking about.
Okay, just wanted to clarify. I'm done.
So, I think, no, it's a good, good question. So, I think what, I think what Counselor Wendlin is getting at, is let's say now we have a new definition of demolition. And so technically a definition, but there are non-conforming aspects of that house people want to maintain and it may be for tree preservation or other things that we value, you know, as a community. How, how do we do, how do, how do we deal with those in approach? I mean, does it, does it make sense to have this definition, this new that we have not, you know, yet decided on definition of demolition line up exactly with that threshold for maintaining the non-conformity? Or are they slightly different? You know, are there...
I think we need to explore that and to see what the, you know, what the trade-offs might be. And again, what the intent is for, you know, for continuation of non-conforming development. If the intent is to afford maximum flexibility for people to remodel so that they might save a tree or that they, they might have a more compatible, you know, development with what's already around them, then, you know, that would lean toward, kind of closer to what we have today for non-conforming development. Leave the wall up and you're entitled to that non-conforming right. But then if we take the neighbor's perspective, say, well, I've been living with this, you know, this wall, it's five feet from my property line for 40 years, and now they're finally remodeling or redeveloping, and I'd like to see that come into conformance. And I think, you know, you're probably leaning more toward a standard that's, you know, it's, would require a retention of more of the structure to maintain that right. So...
Right.
It's just, again, what, what's, what are the values? And Counselor Wendlin's point, you know, what is the intent?
I agree. Because if the, if the only intent is to somehow, you know, maximize the size of the, the, the structure and really just like in that first example that Mr. Don showed, really just build a completely, you know, new house, or like in the one example where you just get some extra, extra square footage in the, in the back, I don't think that's what any of us consider, you know, a remodel. But if they're doing something or situating the house in a way to, you know, maintain, maintain some of the vegetation, maintain significant tree, well, that's, but we haven't seen that in any of these examples. So, that may not even be what's happening anyway. Yeah. So, I guess that will be the question for us. And do we, you know, do these definitions line up? And is you either a remodel or you're a demolition? If you're a demolition, you come into full compliance. Or is there some, you know, gray area perhaps where, yes, it's a demolition, but where there still may be some ability to maintain non-conformities if it is to meet some, some other, you know, some other goals that, that we value?
It may be that there's a definition that needs, that would be created, you know, it's major, major alteration or major remodel of some kind that's, you know, decoupled from demolition, but that would trigger, you know, bringing the development into conformance. So, we can, if we can look at these independently, but also, you know, consider the interrelationships and to Counselor Wendlin's point, you know, what, what are the motivations and really what are the, I guess, the goals, you know, the property owners would have for their, for their properties?
Counselor Mertesacker.
And I think this goes along with what we're saying, but I think one of the things I don't want to see is the, it's not a demolition because I kept up this one wall, which happens to be the only non-conforming piece of the structure.
Right, right. But I think that's why they're doing it.
But that's, so that's what I'm saying. That's what, as we write that, I just think that's what many of us are trying to say, we're not liking that piece of it. So, as you're writing, that would just be my feedback is, is, you know, let's...
Exactly.
Yeah.
That piece, yeah.
So, we're saying that somebody who has a house that happens to have a garage that is on the five-foot line, we're going to tell them if they remodel that they're going to have to come back to the 10-foot setback that, is that what you're saying? So, say then again what you said.
No, what I'm saying is that if you're wanting to do a remodel, that's great. But your remodel cannot be the only piece that you keep is that, that wall that's on the five foot. So, you need to be keeping more of the structure than just that.
An actual remodel.
Which goes back to the article.
So, like some of the examples we saw, really, they kept like one piece because it was non-conforming, but the rest of the house...
Gone.
Was gone. So, it's like you can't just keep the fireplace because that keeps your non-conforming setback.
That's right.
Right, but we're just, so we're basically making the decision that we're not going to allow them to be a non-conformance then.
No, they'd have to be remodeled. They'd have to do a legitimate remodel.
But that's a legitimate remodel or rebuild. I mean, the outcome is probably the same. What I'm just saying is that they want to keep the variance. And so, how do, I mean, we're going to make a decision that, that we're going to say, you can't keep the variance. Because that's what a lot of people do. And I'm not saying one way or the other. I'm just saying consequences. I'm just pointing out the consequences of if we do that, we now are going to have a lot of people that will say, okay, now I cannot keep that variance. Or if I have a smaller lot, I can't have the same footprint. Does that make sense? And we're gonna have everyone have to conform into the, the new code.
Well, what I'm saying is that, again, it goes back to the definition and saying, and I'm not sure what we're gonna, you know, we'll listen to staff and get their perspective. But if we're saying you need to keep like 50% of the walls and part of that is non-conforming, I think, again, we're getting into two different issues. We're getting to the definition, then non-conforming. But I think that's worth looking at the examples. And maybe it makes sense that, hey, you know, you're keeping, you know, half or more of the structure and part of that's non-conforming. Okay, we'll work with that as long as no more of the structure is non-conforming.
Right.
But what I'm saying is how we have it today, I personally don't agree with. Because it really says, I can keep this one wall, which is non-conforming, and then build a whole new structure. And personally, that doesn't sit well with me.
Right, right.
Okay.
Okay, great. I think we're all on the same. So, does that give clarity on non, on the non-conformity?
Yeah, I, what I'm hearing is that, you know, we should get alignment. We have alignment on the definition piece. We'll, you know, come back with some options and some further study and examples. And then it sounds like, if I'm hearing correctly, that we should try to align those two somehow so that, like, really the intent is to have enough of the structure retained so that it is recognized, maybe not recognizable, 'cause you could put different siding on it, but at least the, from a neighbor's perspective, okay, there's a, I see enough of what was there all these years that it, okay, it's not a demolition, it's a remodel. And then the same rights would be afforded to that property owner for non-conforming development because, you know, they've retained enough of the structure. Uh, the Counselor Verdic's saying you've gotta retain enough of it to be entitled to those rights to keep the non-conforming development. Otherwise, that goes away.
Right, and how much that percentage is still to be defined?
Right.
Right, okay, good, yeah.
Well, then when it, when it comes to the demolition tax, I, I think not only should we, you know, extend the demolition tax or just make it a permanent, but I think we should look at the amount, you know, of the, of the tax for sure to, to, to work more towards encouraging remodels and less demolitions. And I think that we should also look at the purpose of that demolition tax. 'Cause I think the, the rationale, you know, was that we're losing many of these smaller homes in the community that are more affordable. You know, a home completely habitable that maybe, I'm not saying this is anything like affordable, but, you know, a seven-hundred-thousand-dollar house, right, that then is demolished and is replaced with a, well, now sometimes over two, almost three-million-dollar house, okay? So, these are two different things, that, that we're losing some of this more affordable housing, but yet the tax goes, you know, to parks maintenance. And I would favor looking at the amount of the tax and directing that more towards a housing-related purpose than a park-related purpose. But that's something for...
Well, that's a whole other discussion.
Well, yes, it's gonna be a future discussion.
And deconstruction.
And the deconstruction. That is actually, I think Counselor Verdic offline, you know, we're the, right now, the five-thousand-dollar, 'cause no one's deconstructed, right, with the five-thousand-dollar incentive?
Not with the incentive.
No.
There may have been projects just voluntarily, people, you know...
We need to give them an actual, like, benefit to deconstruct, not just even offsetting the cost, but make it, you know, something where it's, makes financial sense then for them to, to, to deconstruct. So, if everyone's on board, then we look at all that together. Counselor Wynn?
No, I like what you said, Counselor Buck, about the, what we're using, the funds collected through the demolition tax. Also, if I remember correctly, I thought that there was some sort of restriction on how we could use those funds. I could be mistaken, but that would be good for you to, for to come back. And if we're able to, to use these funds, to be able to directly fund efforts to create more affordable housing, you know, in, in some form, I think that would be more, rather than putting money back into parks.
Counselor Wynn?
Well, I think you should ask the parks people that. I think the intention of why we had that tax go to the park system is because we have few system development charges, because we have no...
Right, right.
We're not building new houses with empty lots in Lake Usuigo, because we have no empty lots. So, the intention was, is that we have a very big, huge, and enormous appetite for parks and for parks and recreation in the city, and we cannot afford everything that we want to have. And so, my point is, is that the intention of this tax was to help offset expenses that the park system is having, because we're not getting any system development charges, because we have no activities, construction activity that's developing the taxes that the Parks and Recreation Department would collect if we had more development. So, that's the offset. So, you're going to have a, I mean, just be careful what we're saying, because there's a lot of parks people that will come in and say that it's important for us to maintain the parks. So, that's all I'm saying.
It's definitely important for us to do.
It's important for us to maintain that lens. The other thing that I just wanted to say is that I did ask our finance director the assessment of what we have for assessed value. And can anyone tell me what our assessed value in Lake Usuigo is? Well, the assessed value is eight-point-four billion dollars, okay? The real market value is thirteen-point-four billion. So, that's that difference between what your RMB and your assessed value. So, the interesting thing is that, and I'm not gonna get into real specifics, but for the last ten years, we've had a two-point-eight-billion-dollar increase in our assessed value, okay, in the last ten years. And that has been a combination of two things. One, the three percent bump that we get every year, that Director Siegel said for property taxes that everybody gets. But we also had, of that two-point-eight-billion, almost eight-hundred-million is through constructive, construction taxes or increased assessed value by construction activity and improvements. And so, that's about twenty-eight percent of the increase. And for those of you who went to the National League of Cities, I'm sure you went to a seminar that a lot of people are talking about how they're not getting much in taxes and they're having their costs rise. In our situation, everyone knows a lot of our expenses are labor, and they go up at a, about a three percent, you know, a year. And we, we hold steady by just having static services, okay? All this extra construction activity creates more value and more assessed value for our budget. And that comes every year, and it's compounding each year because taxes go up three percent. So, all the little extras that we have in Lake Usuigo are funded in large part by this construction activity and increased assessed value. So, throughout this conversation, we have to continue to remember that activity, construction activity and improvement to our assessment, assessed value is important to pay for all the things that we wanna do. So, in, in light of demolition taxes and everything else, you know, let's keep it in our brains how all this money is allocated and what we need to do, because some of our pet projects that we've added over the last six, eight, ten years in city councils, it all costs money, and we all have to, we have to pay for it. And so, when we are looking at taxes and when we are looking at demolition taxes versus, you know, are we going to create a disincentive for construction activity in Lake Usuigo? I don't, I don't want to necessarily do that, and so...
No, I don't think we're doing that.
Well, there's talk about trying to keep current housing and everything.
The market will drive. The market has driven. I believe in market, it's very market-driven. I mean, I see it...
Right. It should be market-driven.
It is market-driven.
It is. I'm just saying if we put handcuffs on the market, that...
I don't think that we put handcuffs. I see both. I'll be honest with you, Counselor. There's a lot of remodels of existing stock in a neighborhood that has smaller homes. They are generally rental homes that are owned by families, not property management homes, okay? The families or, I don't know, mom and dad own the home, and the kids come in and they remodel it and they flip it. I'm just gonna be honest and call it what it is on these smaller lots. I see a lot of that. Demos tend to happen, like complete demos tend to happen where you have an asset, that asset being a view, where it makes financial sense, a view, proximity to whatever it is that's attractive. So, I think the market is operating really well. This is only my personal opinion. I am not an expert in this, but I see it on a daily basis, a very reactive market. I don't think we're handcuffing anyone by doing this. They will tear, they will demolish the house if it makes financial sense to do it. I don't think we're constraining moms and pops. I really don't, because I see the churn, if you will, of housing, old housing stock being remodeled, not demoed, actually remodeled and put back on the market and people making a profit.
Right, right.
'Cause I'm obsessed with real...
I'm a hundred percent for that. That's, yes.
I see it. Now, whether that's true or not, we would have to have staff, and I'd be curious to know if my observation has any merit or if that's simply South Shore, McVeigh, and Hallinan Heights. I don't know.
Yeah, all over. Did you have another point, Counselor?
No, I'm sorry, I'm done.
Okay. No, thank you for that. So, does that give you information on the...
Yeah, Mayor, so what I would suggest is that you really, you know, the critical path on, on this is if you were going to extend it, you'd wanna adopt an ordinance and have it go into effect before the end of the year. So, you know, our timing is that we would probably wanna reach out to, you know, Historic Resources Advisory Board, SAB, parks.
Right.
And I have a builders advisory group that hasn't met in a very long time that I'm sure would be interested in providing, providing input on this.
Feedback.
Yeah, to get, to make sure that we're not creating sort of unintended consequences. 'Cause, you know, some of the, like, if you have, if the tax is too high, then you could, you know, dampen the mark, you know, have an effect there. And if, if it's, you know, is it, is it driving people to build larger houses? I don't know the question to that. That's sort of my hypothesis that I would, I would like to probe into a little bit more is having a, an unintended consequence of doing, I don't know, basements where they wouldn't otherwise do a basement. Some feedback I've been getting, so...
Well, I, I, I do, I mean, and of course, there's assessed value that we get from a lot of commercial development in town too, but also from residential. And I think it, it also just continues to highlight the fact that so many more affordable homes are being replaced by, by homes that are only affordable to a very, 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 very small percentage of the population, just highlighting the need for us to make a greater investment in affordable housing. And that is definitely an issue that we talked about at the League of Cities, with cities all across the country. Everyone is in this same boat, and it's just further exacerbated in a community like Lake Usuigo where the land is so expensive and the homes are very, very, very costly. And we're continuing to price people out of the, out of the community. So, it's just something for us to, to look at. It's not that one thing is, is, is more important than the other, but housing people is definitely very important.
Oh, absolutely. And it, but it comes at costs. I mean, it's a, how do you...
Exactly.
Nothing's a free lunch.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
I, I was gonna throw this out, if I could do this real quickly. Later on, when we were doing our counselor reports, but it's germane to this discussion. The Planning Commission is once again going to start up its tours of neighborhoods, where the commission goes out and actually looks at a neighborhood. There's great interest in this. So, this would be interesting for counselors. You walk through the neighborhood, it's like boots-on-the-ground, look at the housing stock, see what it looks like. Here, usually the Neighborhood Association Chair joins in, and it really gives you, like I say, a boots-on-the-ground look. So, this may be germane to this discussion. They're ramping it up, I think, in the next couple of months. Especially if you haven't done this before. It really is eye-opening, some of the places that you don't know about.
Thank you, Councilor Vance. Okay, all right.
Mayor, I just, I know the Planning Commission Chair heap and the others will really wanna know, like, is this, you know, where is this on the, in terms of, 'cause, you know, they're working through House Bill two thousand one right now. They have hearings scheduled in April. You know, they could, and they have other goals and projects they prioritize, so we kinda need to know, like, where is this relative to the Palisades neighborhood overlay? And, you know, other work that they're doing. So, they'll have opportunity in the spring, late spring, and then again in the summer that they could take a look at the non-conforming development issue, if that's what you're...
Well, certainly, you'll bring the definition of demolition back to us.
Yes, that would come back to you, and then I'll work with the city manager to, how to figure out with the mayor what the schedule is on that.
Well, ideally, we address the demolition as soon as possible, that definition, right? If we are, yeah, as soon as possible. And then the non-conformer, non-conforming development, I, I mean, and you all give me a head nod here if I'm, or tell me if I'm off-base, but they, the planning commission should address as quickly as they can, but, you know, following good, allowing them to have the discussion they need to have and receive the public input they need to have. But it would come before the neighborhood is overlay, for sure.
Yeah.
You know.
I would say that, that House Bill two thousand one is your number-one priority.
This is number two.
And then this is number two.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's good, yeah.
That's helpful.
Okay.
That's, that's what you need, everyone?
Yeah, okay.
We're a straight-talking council.
Thank you very much. Yeah, and thank you again to the team for the
Thank you.
great job on the presentation. All right, let's take a little, let's take a ten-minute little breather here before our next session.
Sustainability things we do.
Okay. We are back, um, you know, back in session, and we are moving to item 7.2, our second study session, which is on, uh, items of sustainability related to LoRoc. As we have Director Andorholm.
Yes. And? We have Jennifer Marchek from Scott Edwards Architect. Also, we have Michael Morelands behind me from Interface Engineering. And Bruce Powers, our Department Project Manager.
Okay.
Um, good afternoon, nearly evening, Mayor and Council. Today, Jennifer is going to take us through, um, a presentation on some of the measures that we've taken, actually, all the measures that we've taken in regard to sustainability and resiliency, um, as we've been designing the Lake Oswego Recreation and Aquatic Center. Um, in my report dated, um, March 7th, um, I do want to point out, um, as we go through this, so that there's not confusion amongst myself especially, but maybe you two, that in a couple of the discussion points, which I think we're going to discuss, um, basically heat pumps, rooftop heat pump units are really one of the areas, along with solar PV panels, and then also, uh, third-party commissioning. Um, the other elements that we've put into sustainability and resiliency, um, we have involved both the Sustainability Advisory Board and Lake Oswego Sustainability Network in two separate, um, charrettes where we, they met with the design team and gave input. And based on that input, we've actually made, um, some, we've implemented some changes to the design, um, to the point, I think, uh, members of the Sustainability Network came forward and, um, are actually in support of what we're doing. But the purpose today is to talk about those three things, but also to inform the council and, um, the mayor about the different efforts that we've put in through, through our process. I will point out that, um, because we are still actively working on this process, that there are a couple, um, things within my report that'll seem inconsistent with the information that Jennifer is going to share. Um, the first one being in, in regard to the heat pump rooftop units. Um, at the time that I wrote the report, um, we had information from, um, our engineers and those looking into it, that we, one of the, the trade-offs of doing those was that it would be a slightly higher, uh, energy consumption. Um, I am very happy to say that when everything got worked out and the engineers did what they did, it's actually a decrease in, in annual energy use. Um, so that's exciting. Um, the second is the size of the solar PV. Um, the solar PV, um, is designed to meet, uh, one and a half percent so that it, it meets the state standard. That one and a half percent is actually based on the cost, the actual physical cost of, of that. So as the increased price estimate for putting in solar goes up, the number of panels that you actually end up with reduces. So, um, at the time, and on, uh, March 7th, when we were looking at this, it was approximately 150 kilowatt, um, or 336 panels, uh, for the base. Um, but with the updated information that Jennifer is going to share, that's actually 125 kilowatts and 274 panels, meet the 1.5%. Um, and then also looking at the expansion of the array, um, it was estimated at 30% could be the, uh, when I wrote the report, and now it's actually, uh, closer to about a 58% increase, um, that would increase that, that array to about 270 kilowatts. With that, um, I'd like to turn over to Jennifer, um, so that she can give a presentation, talk about the, uh, things that we've put in and implemented into the design, um, and then open up for discussion.
All right.
Jennifer.
Thank you. All right, so I'm gonna flip through. Um, there's just a couple slides at the beginning where, just to recap a little bit, what Ivan mentioned, meeting with the, uh, sustainability groups early on, we actually had a sustainability charrette with all of our, thanks, all of our consultants and our team, um, and then met again a couple times later. So this slide just shows a few of those, the results of that first, that first meeting, um, and just kind of pointing out the sort of broader reach of sustainability beyond, you know, energy use and, um, things like that, but also just the, the facility and the community and what, what your goals are overall. So, um, being adaptive and flexible, meeting, meeting the needs as a community hub, some of those things that came out of it, how it fits in the landscape, how it fits with the golf course, um, and then, of course, systems-based things, energy use and durability, long-term maintenance, all of those things. And then just a quick slide from the Lake Oswego Sustainability and Action Plan back in 2021, so just highlights a few of those priorities that you'll see on the next slides. These ones were related, kind of the site, site-related items for EV charging and bicycle facilities, um, and then also building resilient, resiliency overall. Uh, so the next slide is pulling up the site plan, and I'll just go through a few points on the left, um, where we're, overall, the site's trying to minimize cut and fill and using, using the golf course, actually, in conjunction, um, being able to take some of that dirt and spread it there instead of having to take it to a landfill. Uh, stormwater for the whole site is treated before it enters your city system, so the kind of green amoeba-shaped pieces on the Stafford roadside, there's actually three of them, uh, all the stormwater will filter through those before entering the city system. Uh, parking, parking, it, it does seem like there's a lot of parking on-site, um, but it's actually, we've had a couple studies done on that, and it's the lowest amount that we can provide, um, without impacting the neighborhood, and that will still, still utilize, um, adjacent facilities at the high school and parks, uh, for overflow when we have, um, larger events. Also have covered and uncovered bike parking at each of the entries, the, the, uh, competition pool entries kind of on the, can I point on this? Does that work? Oh, it does work. So competition pool entry is down here, and then the main entry is up, um, up towards the top. So both of those have covered and uncovered. Bike parking spaces, um, plant selection overall, uh, and, uh, landscape design is designed for low maintenance, um, and will utilize a lot of native species. Uh, all site lighting is full cutoff, so we won't have any light trespass, uh, beyond the boundaries of the site. Um, and then the other things shown on the site in blue and magenta are, are EV charging parking spaces. The ones in magenta will be installed now, and the ones in blue are meant for future. Um, and that will eventually end up with 34 spaces for, uh, which is 23% of the parking on-site.
And I'll add to that, a unique feature in that is that we did, up near the entrance of the facility, you'll see there's another blue area.
Oh, right.
Right there, but we are actually looking at a handicap EV space as well.
Yeah, that's great.
And then just pulling up the building plan to orient you, again, with the aquatics on the left and then the dry side with the gymnasium and fitness areas and main entry, uh, on the right. Okay, so to start with, uh, pool systems overall, so there's three bodies of water, um, all heated with four natural gas-fired units that comply with the California Energy Commission standards. Uh, pool sanitation is provided with a Defender regenerative media filtration system in combination with chlorine, UV filtration, and pH buffering. Uh, the regenerative media reduces power, water, and chemical usage overall, and the next-gen saline generation chlorine system reduces electricity use, um, and minimizes bulk chlorine on the site, instead producing chlorine from bulk salt. UV filtration reduces overall chloramines, improving, uh, air quality and is effective against chlorine-resistant microorganisms. And then finally, the CO2 system regulates pH instead of using a chemical or acid. The competition pool also includes, uh, LED lights, underwater LED lights for improved safety and visibility, because that body of water is fairly deep. Um, and then in-section pumps succeed the 2020 Department of Energy Efficiency standards. Um, and then concrete mix design, both for the pools and the whole building, uh, will you, will utilize fly ash and low-carbon additives to offset a portion of the raw Portland And then mechanical system, so this is kind of broken into the different areas as well. We'll talk natatorium and recreation. Um, and then on the left, what we're doing, and then on the right, like Ivan mentioned about, uh, some of all, our alternative strategies that we're looking at. Um, so overall, the goals, uh, to, we'll provide an HVAC system that delivers the best combination of reliability, reduce first costs, energy efficiency, reduce maintenance, and was optimized for comfort for the occupants. In the natatorium, the dehumidification units utilize outside air to dehumidify the spaces and include air-to-air heat recovery to extract heat exhausted from the natatorium. Computational fluid dynamic modeling has been employed to optimize airflow patterns throughout, with a focus on removing chloramines at the pool surface and limiting condensation at interior building elements. The recreation spaces are utilized packaged rooftop equipment that is gas heating with DX cooling for all of the areas. Indoor air quality. Indoor air quality, all the units employ MRF-13 filters to optimize indoor air quality by limiting pathogens, allergens, and forest fire smoke in the building.
Sorry, what is DX?
What is DX? I don't know.
It's short for direct expansion. It's just refrigerant-based cooling.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Everyone knows what it is. The old DX.
And then also, this was one piece I missed at the last night presentation, but the systems are also designed for increased outdoor air ventilation, so that's, and that'll be 30% over code minimum. And that was a piece that came up, but didn't have that included. Water use, reduce water use throughout the building by employing low-flow fixtures for water closets, labs, and showers, and sensor-operated where appropriate. So the heat pumps, like we talked about, so this is
They just go longer.
Looking at this on the dry side, so on the right side of that plan, which would eliminate natural gas use in about 50% of the building, replacing it with a heat pump. And then the trade-off, there's slightly increased, slightly higher increased maintenance costs, a little bit shorter life. Electricity use is a little higher, but we figured out, as Ivan mentioned, there's actually a savings, and saves approximately 7% of energy use over a gas-fired unit. And then building commissioning is the other thing that we're really studying. It really helps reduce long-term energy use, lowers your operating costs, reduces contractor callbacks, and improves building documentation, enhancing occupant comfort in the end as well. So all of this testing and modeling we're doing now, you really want to know at the end that your building's working, as you said it would, so that's that extra piece. Okay, moving on to energy. So the project is targeting 46% energy savings over ASHRAE standards and approximately 20% savings beyond Oregon code. The design includes an optimized envelope, employing cost-effective performance for glazing walls and roof, heat recovery at the dehumidification units in the natatorium, LED lighting will be used throughout the facility, and that's controlled with occupancy and daylight sensors and dimmable in most spaces. Daylight is also provided throughout the building with windows and skylights. Demand control ventilation reduces OSA energy use when spaces are not occupied. And then pool water heating makes up approximately 60% of the entire facility's energy use, but those condensing boilers reduce that some amount and lower your annual costs.
Do you know what the lighting system, when you say the dimmable, when we took a tour of our new middle school, Lakewood Middle School, they had lights that figured out what was on the outside and how much sunlight was coming in. Is this what we're doing, so that they dim on their own and they go up and down?
Right.
Just so they only provide the amount of light that you actually need?
Yes.
So that's what we're doing? Okay.
That's what we're doing, yeah, and I believe that's now code required too in a lot of spaces, yeah.
Okay. They're great, I mean, it's a wonderful system.
Yeah, it's pretty cool. Yeah, now with LEDs being so easily affordable and it just makes sense. All right, so renewable energy, like I've mentioned, this project's gonna meet at a minimum of the state's 1.5% for green energy technology requirement, using solar PV on the roof. So the array size that you see in blue, outlined in blue, is that approximately 274 panels, which is 125 kilowatts, and then the panels will provide up to 3% of building energy use. And so if you expanded that on the right side of the roof there, that gets you up to 595 total, so that's 325 additional and 270 kilowatt. And then just a couple views of the building, this is the intersection of Overlook and Stafford, and you can see the panels a little bit on the right, that stormwater swell in the foreground. And then more from the Stafford driveway, looking back towards the gymnasium and the main entry on the right, and then the pool on the left. Okay, building construction and materials, I already mentioned about the low-carbon concrete. The building design and material selection is focused on long-term durability, maintenance, and low or no VOC emissions. Exterior materials include concrete masonry, storefront glazing, and metal panel. Interior materials include polished and room-finished concrete, floors, and tile in wet areas for overall durability, maintenance, and safety. On the inside, our finished materials and furniture are still under development, but with selections made with a preference for recycled concrete and local, or recycled content, sorry, and local materials where possible. Interior finishes are also being selected with sustainable certifications in mind, including LEED, Living Building Challenge, Green Guard, Cradle-to-Cradle, Cradle and Other certifications. And then in addition, we've really been looking at acoustics in all the spaces and making sure those are safe and you're able to hear and you don't get a lot of sound trespass. And that's one of the items we've been studying quite a bit in the natatoriums, office areas, all the spaces really, that we're looking at options and levels of treatment. And then some alternative strategies, one of those is utilizing bird-safe glass on any glazing face above 12 feet, that would use an edged pattern in the glass to deter birds from that flight path. And then, again, increased acoustics as an option. In this slide, I won't go through everything here, but this is just looking at in more detail of the selections that we have made for, with paint and flooring, laminates, lockers, and that kind of certifications that those materials selected are meeting. And then finally, building resiliency, so this is the right side of the building, the dry side recreation spaces, including the gymnasium, fitness rooms, lobby, and offices are all designed to risk category four voluntary structural design. That includes a portion of outlets and lighting equipped for emergency backup power to be served by a portable generator. This portion of the building is designed for immediate occupancy in the event of a major seismic occurrence. The building shell is designed to be intact, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems are intact and in place, although they may not be fully functional, because we are not providing permanent backup power, it's just with a temporary generator. And the building can serve then as a temporary place of refuge, but won't be considered an essential facility or an emergency shelter. And I think that's it.
Great. Thank you so much. We, the comments from our friends at the Sustainability Network earlier in regards to, they had good questions in regards to the payback period, so have we calculated the payback period for the entire photovoltaic for array?
We don't have that yet, I did pull up, so we're working with Imagine Energy, they're our solar trade ally, and they do the in-depth study of where is optimal and what we can get. They did an early round way back when we had a much smaller kind of overall construction budget, and that was just for the minimum, the 1.5%, and we were showing about a six-year payback. So we'll have them go back and calculate for the full array and then calculate the payback for that.
Okay. And could we, they had some good ideas in terms of community grants, you know, other ways of funding it, because, you know, those would be good to look at as well, okay. As, you know, as far as I'm concerned, I love the idea of going with the electric, you know, on the roof, seeing that reduced energy use, again, looking at the solar, but I just really appreciate the process you've gone through here, you know, in general, and all the features this building is going to have, you know, making it a very resilient and sustainable building. But I just, the components that we've included here, this all complies with our own, you know, climate action plan moves us towards the goals, okay?
Yes, it moves us towards the net zero, the 2045 net zero goal for buildings, and this is a step, and actually, I think Amanda Watson's here too, and I conferred with her earlier today, and this building is taking steps towards that ultimate goal of net zero in 2045.
Okay. And slightly, you know, off the sustainability, but somewhat related, the furniture, we'll have furniture in this building.
Yes, we will.
Okay.
Not as much as this building, but we will have furniture.
Speaking of this building, where are we getting the furniture from?
Well, so part of the furniture, actually, we already have, so we're actually repurposing furniture that we recently purchased for our golf clubhouse, so that we do have some furniture that'll be utilized both in the lobby as well as in the staff area. And then we are looking right now, we're working with a vendor right now, looking at office furniture as well as the build-out. The furniture that we have is really, we have, in the lobby area, we have some high-top tables, things like that, and then we have some comfortable, like lounge, is really where we have it. And then the rest of the furniture, really, that you would think of as traditional furniture is really in our office area. So it would be in our office area, and then in the offices down in the aquatics portion of the building. And then we have some movable chairs and rollable chairs in our multipurpose rooms, but it's not a heavy furniture. Our furniture fixture and equipment, when you look at that, it's really focused on interactive equipment for the public to use when they come to use the facility.
Right. I guess to get at my point, we just want to avoid that prison labor, you know, system of the, you know, enterprise profits at the expense of the slave, you know, like labor with the inmates.
Yeah, right now, we're looking, the vendor we're working with is our Herman Miller vendor, which is the lobby furniture that we have here, and also the office furniture that you see throughout this building and most of our municipal buildings.
Well, yes. Okay. Counsel, well, thank you.
Wow, almost everything is political these days. I guess I wanted to ask a question more, Jermaine, to the, well, first of all, I just want to do a shout-out to Jennifer and all that she does in her architecture firm, Scott Edwards, they have done a fantastic job in this whole process, and I have to compliment them for both the facility management of the meetings of our, of the PAC group that meets, which is very divergent in lots of different opinions and different people. But I also wanted to say that when you're bringing the whole community together, not just the city, but the school district, and then pool users, and then activity people and whatever, it takes a certain art form to get everybody happy, and they really have bent over backwards to really listen and make adjustments to this whole process to get us, I think, into the best possible outcome. So, thank you, and thank you for your whole team, and it's a big team too.
Thank you for saying that.
There's a lot of work that goes on. I guess my question on the community emergency center use, I know we're not putting generators in, I guess it's, one of the questions that we should answer as a council and as a city is, should this be a facility that we have that will be, could be, used as a emergency center in the case of an earthquake? I don't know, is this, I know there's different standards that, like a category one, two, three, four, whatever, is this going to be still standing when there's the big earthquake, theoretically?
Yeah, so in particular, that right side of the building, the dry side, is doing the voluntary category four, so that's the highest, the highest level that you can get.
Right.
So meant for immediate occupancy after a large
Okay.
Yeah.
And barring any cracks, we'll have plenty of water, but the, on the other side, but the, I guess my question is, it would be interesting to know if there's a benefit to having the building have a generator so it could be a community center for gathering, because I think they built Lakewood Middle School to a certain extent, and then this building is somewhat, I mean, I don't know if it's gonna be a community gathering totally, but I know the Emergency Preparedness Group is very interested in finding out, you know, it wasn't that much of a cost difference to get us to where we would have a place for people to gather, and I don't know if that's been looked into or not. I know we're already tight on the budget, but I just wanted to throw that out there to see if it was a huge expense, or if we're already category four, what would it take to get us into, you know?
The next level.
Yeah, I can try to address, I think the building itself, though, won't have a permanent generator that's associated with it, a backup generator that would run off systems. It has been designed so that the kind of mustard-yellow areas, the yellow lobby area, the office area, we will have the opportunity to bring a portable generator to the front, basically where the gym is off the parking lot, and basically plug the building in. In looking at that, part of our overall emergency management program for the city has long identified the Lusher Farm Golf Course area as an area where we have things such as auxiliary fuel. So we will still have auxiliary fuel at the golf course, we're gonna have auxiliary, both diesel and gasoline there. The intent is to also have a portable generator that's actually at that yard with our maintenance, so that could be used, and what we felt when we kind of took a look at it, is having the flexibility of, this may be the place that we need it, and we could plug it in, but essentially, the system is set up, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we plug it in, and then there is auxiliary power throughout that entire portion that meets the level four. So it won't power necessarily the systems, like the HVAC, the heat like that, but there will be power available, there will be lighting that can be used, and it will be, but more on a temporary basis as opposed to a long term. But it will go as long as the generator, we have the generator there, and we can keep it fueled.
Okay. And then the other part is, I just wanted, I'm the liaison for Parks and Rec, and they did, were considering a few different options, and they were supportive of certainly the using thermal, or not thermal, but
The heat pumps.
Heat pumps.
Yeah.
And then also doing the, paying for
Commissioning.
Being qualified for commissioning, which is a really good idea, and it doesn't, those are not high-cost items, but, and then they came in that they would be supportive of putting arrays, solar arrays everywhere, but they know that it's costly, and they didn't have the money to do it, but, because they're not really, I mean
Look at the payback.
But, well, it's, we didn't have the payback numbers at that point, so they were kind of advising blind, but, but they did say that they, there is a, they would study it further based on the payback, but their concern is that they would probably use the money for other things, and Parks and Rec as an option, I mean, they'd have to weigh those differences, so, anyway, that's it for me.
What portion of the building would the PV array power? Could, I mean
It's available for all the
But just in terms of the resiliency, I mean, could that be, you know, like power the more resilient part of the building?
I don't know. Mike, do you know if you can direct?
Well, I mean, I guess you'd have to circuit it to a specific panel, and then from there, that's what it would power, but
Yeah, that's true.
I think you could segment it somehow, but, I don't, you know, the solar array does, what did we say, 7% of the whole building?
With the full, the full build-out is 7.
Right.
Yeah.
A lot of that's probably
It's a matter of circuiting, I think, really, is what it comes down to.
Okay. Just for, you know, the basic, you know, if it funded, or if it fueled the basic powered?
Yeah, they did recommend to plum everything so that it's, we don't go retro, if we can't afford it now, to retrofit it so that we could add it later if we needed to, so, and that didn't seem to be a huge costly endeavor.
Yeah, we talked about it a little bit more today, and I don't, I don't think it is, I think Ivan answered a question today, and threw out a, threw out a number of less than 20,000 to get it solar-ready. I, from what I heard today, I think that's probably right, or maybe even a little less. So, but we are looking at that more, I don't want to commit to those numbers without, without the full team looking at it, but, yeah.
There's multiple levels to it, so there's the the, just basically putting in oversized conduit or additional conduit that goes from the roof to our electrical room. But then beyond that, there's also the electrical panels, there's there's other things that, that there's a multitude of how far you can go to have it ready. Um, on the one end, um, with the focus, I call it like the integrity of the building. It's basically if we're gonna put a hole in the roof, let's do it now. Let's not come back and have to drill a hole in the roof because the integrity of of the roof system could be compromised at that point. So at the minimum level, doing something like that, um, I think makes all kinds of sense. But then it's a matter of how much circuitry and how much paneling and and the different things that you wanna put into the receiving end of of where the panel's energy would go. And so that, there there's a multitude there and that's part of what, um, you know, we can definitely, um, explore. The thing, why we brought this to council and why we thought we needed to come for for this work session and kind of get some direction is that we, when we looked at what the cost of maximizing the array was, it definitely pushes us beyond the direction that we were given by council as far as our maximum budget. And so that does become a consideration of the upfront, um, budget. So that's why we wanted to come get a direction. Um, I've discussed with with Jennifer and with Bruce, um, there's no harm in moving forward and in continuing to explore this and even develop this as a full build out as an alternative that could move all the way through the bid phase and then, um, look at it when we actually get hard numbers as opposed to investments we have. But in that case, that also gives us the time as we're moving forward to really examine what the payback is. Um, the questions that you brought up about circuitry and how, where the energy's going and where we, where we're primarily sending the energy or if a manual switch, I know, we don't talk about that much anymore, I'm the son of an electrical contractor, but there's manual switching that you can actually take a, an array like this and actually go in and click it and it can go to a circuit. But, um, so so there is some things that we can explore that really do not, um, elevate the cost for us to do it in kind of a safe way. Um, I'll say personally, I think if if there was a way to do it, it would be great to do it because I I think we're, and then on the other hand, we're always gonna have this roof space. This roof space is always gonna be engineered to to hold the the weight load of of these panels. Um, and then the other discussion that we went, when we went to the Parks Board last night, the discussion was even if we postpone putting the array up at the point that the the array that we do put up and we start looking at, um, replacing panels with how quick, um, the technology is advancing, which, you know, these array panels could be 15 to 18 to 20 years and we're we're looking at replacing them, the technology may be something new that enables us to even do more, um, at at that point. So, um, it, really, we brought it to you because we know that we were given direction to stay in our lane as far as dollars and cents. And so we're trying to be responsible that way, but we also see that there is some some benefit to to the expanded in either doing it now or at least making provision, uh, to do it later.
We appreciate it because we'll be doing something somewhat similar, I believe, at the, uh, water treatment plant. So we're just learning all that we can learn about solar energy.
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilwoman.
Just a quick question about, um, being. But more. Just a quick question, I know that, um, the energy usage, um, to heat the water is is the ma- the major concern. I just be interesting to see, just for comparison, if we were to reduce, for every one degree reduction in water temperature, how much that might save us in terms of gas? I don't know what the what the spread is allowed in terms of like, um, you know, what's the, what's the regulation? What's, uh, appropriate for a cold water pool versus warm water pool? But that might be interesting to see, you know, if if as a community, if we can say, hey, we can live with, you know, a one or two degree lower water temperature.
If you're a swimmer.
For the showers?
Cold showers. Oh, yeah, cold showers for sure, that keeps it quick. You reduce the water, you know?
No brainer.
Cold showers gotta make it fast, right?
Um, so what I will say in in with my experience in in operating aquatics facility is that the minimum temperature of the water that we have is actually regulated by the state health department. So we 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 can hit that minimum and I'll tell you, competitive swimmers want you at the minimum and they want you to cheat it and maybe even have it a little bit cooler a lot of times. And then, um, folks that are either older or younger don't want you anywhere near the minimum temperature. But no, that that's a good point and and actually, I think, um, without talking to our engineers, I think that that information is readily available, um, primarily from, uh, the the aquatics community itself. Because I think that that's one of the major concerns. Um, you know, you're looking at this this building that's nearly 63,000 square feet and really 60% of the energy consumption is over there looking at the pools and heating the pools. I mean, it 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 does take a lot of energy. Um, I do wanna note, even though it didn't show up in this report, um, when we did engage with Sustainability Advisory Board in the Lake Osipigo Sustani- Sustainability Network, they also asked us to to do some review of looking at actually heating the pool water, um, through electric only and eliminating the gas. Um, but I think it's good to note that as we looked into that and Jennifer and Michael can correct me if I'm wrong, but as we looked into that, what we found in our current climate is that we would have to install a redundant system, still have our gas furnaces and have an electric system. And that approximately five months out of the year, we would be using the the natural gas system and the electric system and in really what it is, it's a, it's, the technology is not quite there yet. But it also places us in a good place going with a gas fire that we know that we have 20 to 25 years of this technology. And we all know that natural gases is targeted for being phased out over time. When we look at this equipment and in the expected life expectancy of this equipment, when decisions are gonna need to be made, I believe the technology is gonna be there. And we're, right now, the gas is much more efficient. And like I said, we would have to install a redundant system that would switch back and forth. But as we get to the end of the life cycle for these these gas boilers, I think that we'll be in a in a place where we can actually look at it. So the transition isn't gonna be a huge hurdle, um, when when we do make that. But it was, yeah, we would have a redundant, we'd have two different pool water heating systems that would have to switch back and forth.
Okay. So I.
Can I ask one more question? On, um, when you say the energy reduction with the solar panels, is that for electricity or is that total consumption for the building? Meaning that because 60% is gonna be by gas, is that a total complete?
I think it's the total. I think, um, what Kim gave it, it's 3% energy reduction for the total.
Okay, which is significant because our energy hog is the the water.
Right.
As as in any facility like this. And that's one of the, I think, one of the reasons why you say it's so hard to get a LEED certified designation for a pool is because.
Or a net zero pool.
Or a net zero pool is because no one would swim in it. So, I mean, it would just be, and then you don't have to buy it. So it's kind of one of those things that it's, um, so.
Yeah, what, I I I think we're hearing that we have, you know, um, investigating the solar more, moving ahead. Um, uh, certainly allowing us to to look at that, um, uh, if we move this through as 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 a, as an option, you know, when we get the hard numbers and then being able to look at that in the context of the of the of the payback period would be really helpful. And then we're hearing, you know, thumbs up on the heat pumps and the and the commissioning, you know?
Excellent.
Yeah. Okay. Wonderful.
Excellent, that's great direction.
Thank, and thank you again, very, uh, great presentation, um, and just very excited about this facility.
Yeah. So when do we break ground tomorrow? Oh, you laugh.
We have submitted for land use. And we're in the 30 day completion and then after we have completed that, then there's 120 days of review. And at that point, then we are clear to, um, essentially have, if we can get the construction drawings and documentation ready, we'll be ready to to bid.
Yeah, yeah, with about two more months of drawing.
Okay.
So we get the golden shovels, huh?
You absolutely will. And you'll even probably see me in a suit and tie.
Wow, wow.
Gotta do it before I leave.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. I know that Director Anderson is not gonna go too far. As we move to council business here, we have the Parks and Rec Land Acquisition Policy for our consideration. And you have a little presentation for us on this or?
I don't have a presentation, no.
Give us a general overview?
I definitely will. So, um, in eight point one, um, the council report, um, what we've come up with is a, is a acquisition policy. Um, council and and mayor, you're aware that the city has for, oh, about eight years now had, um, a park disposition policy, which is an officially adopted policy for, uh, consideration of disposing of park property or or park use property. Um, as you're aware, we have had, um, numerous in the last five years, um, times where either willing sellers have approached us or councils have been interested in our property or the department has suggested a property that we look at for, um, purchasing for, to add to our inventory of assets. Um, what you have before you is, uh, a policy, um, that we developed, um, within the department, um, using as a basis, um, some best practice policies, um, that were provided through our network, both through the Oregon Recreation Parks Association as well as the National Recreation Parks Association. Um, and essentially what we're doing is we're putting in writing a a policy and process for, um, evaluating who can present a a property or an asset for purchase. And then making sure that when we evaluate those properties, that we're looking at our community developed, plans that have been adopted by city council for evaluating the value and if those those properties are are a good fit for our system. So I know that probably each and every one of you has asked me at one, one time in in recent time what our policy is, um, for purchasing property or looking at acquiring property. And my answer's been, well, our general practice has been, well, this right here is is our, um, basically codifying an approach. Ultimately, what ends up at the end of this approach, as with any acquisition or consideration of acquisition of property, is it is a, the council's decision, um, to to decide if or when to do it. Um, what this does is it puts forth a a process and an evaluation criteria for the department to work, um, through a process to look at valuation and then also look for fit based on our adopted plans. And to be able to report to council to help, um, council make an informed decision on acquisition of future park assets. And with that, um, I'm willing to answer any questions you might have.
Does anyone have any questions for the director? All right, well, uh, thank you very much for the presentation and to the the Parks Board for working through the the policy. I'm glad that we.
Yes, and and I did, I I would be remiss, but the, um, Parks Board did, um, take a look at this on a couple of different occasions and actually, um, um, approved this, uh, in its form and recommended it to council for adoption as as our official policy.
Would you like me to make?
That's what makes it easy.
Actually, can I ask the question?
Oh, oh, uh, Councilwoman has a question.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
So this is, this would not preclude council from making a decision. Let's just say somebody approached council in a very confidential way. We had executive session, um, about a piece of property because they didn't want it to be known or they were going to donate it or different things like that. This just is a general guideline, it doesn't preclude us from, if for some reason, some opportunity that was kind of off the normal, um, policy, that would preclude us from action.
No, it does not preclude you and actually, the, um, if, in the policy, when we talk about, um, how we typically acquire property, which is spelled out how we tip, but it also has a statement in there that it includes, but it's not mandatory. So that it ultimately, it doesn't take any of the power or authority away from city council on making these decisions. But what it does do is gives us a process if council wants us to have a process of evaluating and, um, providing information to council about a property. But there are going to be, um, incidents that you're, that you're mentioning and those have happened. And this does not preclude council's ability to to make decisions.
Okay, thank you. Good question, okay, Councilman.
Move to approve this policy to establish guidelines for the acquisition of parks, trails, and natural areas for the purpose of public recreation, natural resource protection, and environmental sustainability.
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes six, uh, zero. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. All right, moving on to the consent agenda, we just have a few items here. We have the, uh, contract for the design and permitting of the Daniel Way Channel Stabilization, stabilizing project. We have, um, contract for pavement management services for the tw- well, part of the 2018, 2022 pavement management, um, program. And then we have an ordinance, uh, annexing three parcels. If you all will recall, we had a, um, conducted the hearing on this and there were some, um, conditions that the applicant had to meet and that they have now met that. And so now we're ready to adopt the ordinance, so if there's.
Move to adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, any, well, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes six, zero. And we move on to information from council, does anyone have anything they'd like to share?
The only thing I will share is that we had a fairly, uh, active meeting at the Parks and Rec Board involving pickleball. And I will not get into a whole lot of specifics, but, uh, the neighborhood association, uh, is, would like the pickleball court removed for noise and, um, uh, the pickleball group, and I think there was probably 70, 75 people that showed up, um, for the, um, meeting. And they sat through a long discussion, so they were there for a long time. So anyway, you may get some more emails about that, you may be, um, talking. Where we stand now is that they're going to study it, um, and they're going to see implications of different options they may have, uh, whether putting additional mitigating measures to, um, make it more soundproof, um, looking, it doesn't look like there's any other locations to put it in Lake Osipgo, because we don't have any more.
I heard that the lake was being considered.
It was, but we just don't, our slope's too much is the problem. So, um, we're putting it over near where you are. Well, that's what they, um, they thought as well and it does, that does not go, it would be kind of like telling a golfer to use a ping pong ball or something, um, that doesn't work. So anyway, um, but it is active and I will say that it's, um, very engaged conversation between the people. So you may get some more emails on it, uh, but it's work in process, so.
They continue the meeting too, right?
Yeah, they're still using the facility and, um.
Did Parks Board continue the meeting? I heard they didn't quite, they want more time for.
Yeah, they want some more time to, uh, evaluate, get some answers, get some, maybe some possible solutions, maybe mitigate. They did not make a decision to, um, not have pickleball court at, which is probably wise. So, not that they could actually make the decision, I think it would maybe have to come to us, I think.
I think they're gonna recommend a recommendation.
So.
They could recommend.
They could recommend, right, so anyway.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to share our Washington DC trip. No airdropping or that, but I just wanted to say that, uh, for you, you have excellent employees. Honestly, Charity and Jamie, they were like outstanding. Yeah, they, you know, they deserve, you know, uh, you know, to be recognized, they were nine. Yeah, they, you know, they deserve, you know, you know, to be recognized. They were nice, the kids felt like home and, you know, the, our students were also really.
Yeah.
Bright and very, you know, good, yeah, they face, you know, senators and ask questions that were even higher in level of, yeah. So, yeah, all in all it was, and also can, of course, you know, we had every lodging and everything thanks to.
Yeah.
Yeah, so honestly, we are proud of our employees, of our staff and everything. And our mayor presented, it was wonderful, it was like, and Martha, like Martha said, Joe, the Azar Joe's tribune was bigger, but our Joe's was very relevant. I'm not saying better than the Azar Joe, but.
Our Joe is better than their Joe, is that what you're saying? No.
No, I'm saying that our Joe, no, yeah, our Joe was great. We were proud of our Joe. And, and Counselor Wen also presented with Defazio was.
Oh, Chris Schrader.
Chris Schrader. You know, good, yeah, very cool, it was very ex, it was excellent. I mean, it was a pleasure to be with our colleague and sister, you know?
Yeah.
That was really, Counselor Verdi was, it was the best and we have to do this, we learn a lot, a lot, you know? We, and also we learned that our council is very functioning and we are happy.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that's, yeah.
Thank you, Counselor Bu.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was great. Okay, who else, huh? Okay, is Phelan, you're, you're stepping in for a couple of weeks here-ish? Okay, but you're in charge, right, right now and next week? So if we need anything, we're trying not to rock the boat too much. Okay. All right, that is it, we are now adjourned. Thank you. Thank you everyone.
Yay.
It's great, thank you, good discussion.